Okay, I will call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The board wants to provide ample opportunity for public comment on matters that come before us. Your input is important. If you wish to address an item already on the agenda, we ask that you do so when that item comes up for discussion. If you have a comment on a matter not on the agenda, this is the time during our meeting for such comments. The board would like to remind everyone in attendance that to avoid violations of individual rights of privacy, a member of the public wishing to address the board during this time will not be allowed to make comments about any student, staff member, or member of the general public. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Well, I will.
Okay.
All right. So I've been, um, I'm Sean. And, uh, we've, we've had a lot of years together. And I've been over the last, I'm gonna read part of this and part of this I'm just kinda gonna go and just speak to. But, um, over the last many years, fourteen years, um, you know, I've been on the board. Um, and I've been doing a lot of reflecting over this, this whole situation. Uh, this, this whole, uh, process that we've had over the last year, uh, last six months, really. And, and, uh, you know, I've, I think, I feel like personally that we've kinda lost track of kids. We've lost track of kids. We're about three-day weekends. We're not about kids. And, and so that troubles me and that disturbs me. Um, and I was just gonna, I just wanna say this. I've been a classroom teacher for twenty-four years, so I've, I've been in the trenches and I know how it is. You know, I've worked in education for over thirty-five years. So, um, you know, and, and why have I done all of these things? Why, why have I been on the board for fourteen years? Well, I believe in kids and it's kids first for me. Okay? Um, I'm not, I, I, I don't feel we're going that direction. Now, I've, um, the board made a vote, made a decision, and, and I don't believe that decision was in the best interest of the kids. But I, I accept the decision. That's the direction it's going. You know, I, I, if, if a four-day week or a three-day weekend actually brought significant educational advantage, I'd feel a lot different about this. Okay? But it doesn't. We are, on Fridays, we're essentially dropping five-hundred-and-fifty kids off on the street. Ten, uh, that's ten percent of our county population, which is pretty significant. At least fifteen percent of those who have IEPs or have many other additional, uh, emotional, uh, needs and need support. That's significant as well. So, you know, I, I think that overall, I'll just kinda make this short, but overall, it's, it's not a five-day versus a four-day kind of thing for, for me. There's lots of other scheduling models. There's lots of different things, uh, ways to approach education. What really troubles me is, is, you know, is the fact that, you know, I'm really fundamentally opposed to any scheduling model, any scheduling model. That, that takes services and/or educational opportunities away from especially K-8 students and their families. That, that's what, that troubles me especially. I really reject the notion that taking kids out of school for one day a week is a good thing. But many in our educational community obviously think I'm wrong, so that is what it is. Simply, the decision to prioritize a three-day weekend over helping kids is a decision that simply doesn't align with those particular educational values or those parental values that I hold dear and I've held dear for my entire thirty-some years in education. So, um, I think if I were to remain on the board, you know, I, I very much suspect that I would probably vote against whatever leads us in a way that, that I, that I feel doesn't support kids. Simply put, not four-day, five-day, whatever, simply doesn't support kids. And I think all of my votes throughout the years have supported kids. I feel like that. We've got a great building. I, I think that that's, um, and other things, and I think that's the case. So with every one of those votes, every one of those things that we come across over the next year if I were to remain, I'm gonna, I'm an obstructionist, in your eyes, in many eyes. And I don't need to deal with that. You know, I'd rather spend my time helping kids and I've got plenty of kids to help. Uh, throughout the Helena area, throughout the college area, I've got plenty of kids to help. I'll remain, I'll continue to help kids. So, so with that, with that, um, I resign as trustee of Townsend School District. So thank you very much. Chairman O'Noyes has the full letter and I will be on my way and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name for a minute.
Yes, my name's Paul Green. I live in Winston. First, I want to thank Sean for everything he said because I support everything he said. I participated in that survey. Very unscientific survey, if I might add, on Survey Monkey. Available only to people who have the internet, who use the internet, and who track the school board website to see when that thing came out. It was a very limited pool of people who were aware of it and who could actually take it. It's a good question about four-day weeks, but there was also a lot of other good questions in there. How well supported the teachers felt they were? Were they getting what they needed to do their jobs, things like that? There were also some good comment sections in there. I'd like to know when the detailed results of that survey will be made public. Or I guess the question would be, does the school board here own that survey or does that belong to the Montana School Board Association?
No, the school board received, uh, the entirety of it.
Who funded it?
Uh, the school district.
Okay, so the public's entitled to it. It's tax dollars paid for it. So my question again is, when will the detailed results of that survey be made public?
I, I will check on the, there, there's comments, you know, in there that have to be redacted.
Well, there's names that have to be redacted. Other than that, the comments are...
I will, I will work with the superintendent and get that.
So there, like I said, there are good questions in there and hopefully there are some good responses to that as well. And give us, give us, give you guys, gals, a good sense of what the teachers think the school's doing to support them, but also to give the community a sense of how the teachers feel. And also to give the school board and the school administration a good sense of how the community feels about schools. So we'll be looking for that. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we will move on. Um, we have some recognition of individuals, delegations, and correspondence. So there is... Excuse me, real quick. Superintendent Ellen had another obligation tonight. She had to miss this meeting, known about it for quite a while. Uh, Mr. Rock has agreed to kinda fill in that spot and, uh, will be taking that role tonight.
We had some recognition of Terry Arts for her passion of adult education, of her organization, and her continual support to instructors and attendees. And that was from Rhonda Simmons and signed by many others. And, uh, we certainly appreciate everything Terry Arts has done for our adult ed program. Also, uh, would just like to, uh, recognize the incredible teacher during Teacher Appreciation Week. And we have received several things here at the school in support of our teachers and appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Um, elementary building project. Mr. Swanell.
Good evening, trustees. We're finishing up the classroom additions. Uh, we have a plan schedule for last week of May. Um, I'll be putting the final touches on that. Uh, at this point, obviously, we'll get through the, whatever plan list does come up. I would say in the June meeting, we should have a final wrap-up on handover to the district. Currently working on the landscaping. That's expected to be completed over the next couple of weeks. Sands and any broken concrete, but, um, putting that in that they'll have to replace. We have a one-year warranty walk on the main project last week of May, but that is without the mechanical. Uh, we're not starting the one-year warranty, you know, not starting that till August because that's when all the equipment actually turned on. So the warranty on the building itself, the one-year walk, we'll go through that and then the mechanical system will be in the fall because that's when we actually started all the equipment. High school roofing project scheduled to start the first week in June. We're currently having some issues with material supply, um, contractor, but still steadfast. They're gonna start the first week in July, which is good because in the informational package, you also have the solar, just for information, what the solar panel removal and the reinstall is, and what that cost was. And that's coordinated with our roofer, so that allows work together because the crane's gonna be here on site. Half of it's gonna be to the solar guy and half of it's gonna be a roofer, so we'll... But that stays together because it doesn't, we have crane issues we have to deal with. Commissioning is complete and a test, and we're just waiting on our testing ballots on the mechanical system. So hopefully that starts to address finalizing and the pressurizing of the building. That's what they were doing in there a couple of weeks ago, working out the ceilings. And hopefully that, our testing ballots comes back, we've got that issue figured out. So without any questions, did you have any questions to hand out on our building project?
That's good. Thank you. You may.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, moving on to committee meetings. Negotiations continue. Um, Todd and I have been working on that. We had a meeting again last night. As we discussed earlier, most of the earliest meetings were, you know, correcting the language, the document itself. Um, still working through a few of those, but we've got most of that done. Starting to work on actual proposals and, you know, working through what the district can offer and sustain and keep the budget intact. Discussions are proceeding. Um, the two groups, both, we meet with both the certified union and the classified union each time. And they're, they're progressing. We have the next meeting scheduled for the seventeenth, if I remember, uh, to continue that. Facilities committee meetings, June thirteenth. If I recall, do you have that, Sean, then?
So that will be a tour of the properties and trying to prioritize the maintenance of those little properties on the thirteenth.
All right, any questions on those? Okay?
Will that include the rental, George? Or is it...
Do not know if that is, I believe, my understanding was that was...
Just the two houses.
Two residences, school laws.
Okay, um, I believe we have a presentation on the teacher residency program.
So I'd like to introduce our current teacher resident, Katie Goodman, and her teacher leader, Kim Gilligan.
Well, I just, um, I found out I was gonna be speaking to you guys. Kinda sat down and I wrote down a list of all the benefits that I experienced during this. And I've got a pretty full sheet. I could've kept going here because it was just incredible. So, if you want, I'll just start with some of these I experienced. First one is, one of the most important things that they teach us in our program is routines. And I got to see starting routines. I've started to see how we kinda wrap up the year as we move towards the end of May. Also seeing how you come back from a long break, how do you get kids ready for that? How do you keep those routines going in your classroom that you start? I've gotten to build relationships with students and parents, which has been amazing. I've gotten to experience not only parent-teacher conferences, but a lot of the social events, the ice cream social, steam night, just a lot of involvement with the parents and our community members that support those children. I've gotten to experience trainings as well. So I've gotten to see how we test kids, um, as we move into some different things. But also really gotten to be part of the team. Traditional student teaching, you're just there for the twelve weeks, if it works out that way. You're with your teacher mostly. You don't get to experience what it's like being part of that school team. I really have. I've gotten to experience those cross-grade level conversations, just working with your grade-level team in how can we improve learning for our students. Really got to be part of that, where I traditionally would not have been. And I've been an active in the school and the community, which has led me to the desire to stay in Townsend. And I think that any resident that came here would have that same feeling. It's a wonderful place. I don't ever wanna leave. But not only that, but I've also had a year of mentorship. And mentorship that will last me for the rest of my teaching career, I feel. It's been feedback for a year that I can improve my teaching practice. When I go into my first year of teaching, I feel confident going into that classroom. I've had so many questions come throughout the year that if I was there for those twelve weeks, I probably wouldn't have experienced those things and even been able to ask before I'm in there on my own seeing these things. I've gotten the opportunity to try new ways of teaching as well that I wouldn't have in those twelve weeks. And I've also gotten to further my learning besides just the courses that I finished up at school. I did a few residency meetings where we got to really learn about personalized learning and how it can benefit our students moving forward. What I've got of benefits, if there's any questions, hopefully I can answer them.
Although kinda, given kinda what she said, that, uh, I've had student teachers in the past that were, you know, that eight-to-twelve week situation and, um, you mean to try to do your best with them, but they're for a short time. They come in, they observe, they teach for a few weeks and then they, we, we take back over and they're not. For Katie, she was here from the get-go. She was here for a student start. She has been through almost everything that I've been through. Not quite, but... But then, and then she's also been through stuff that I didn't have to be when I was stuck in Minnesota. She had to do the parent-teacher conferences because I was stuck in the snowstorm, so I'm like, can you... And she did great. It was student-led, but she, she did amazing. So I think that this is a much better way, um, for their learning especially. Just because I feel like it's kinda like she said, you kind of, we grow our own. Um, that's kind of a turnaround there, but, um, this was, she saw our system. She saw how we, we work here. And that kinda works into like a mentor, a pre-mentorship, like, because I think we have a lot of teachers that come into our system as new teachers and we think, oh yeah, they're a new teacher. And then we do our own thing and we kind of forget that they were the new teacher and they're like, how do you do that? How do you... So she was right there beside me. She, she learned it all. She had, she was required to do all my committees. She was required to do all my meetings. She would, you know, do all the grading, all that kind of stuff. And I think it was a huge benefit for us because, well, as you guys know, beginning of the year, it was kind of like either take her or live with thirty kids in your room and do it. But so I'm like, well, give her to me. And I'm so glad they did. And we sent them much twenty, but it just gives you still that more hand-on deck. So it gives all our kids, you know, that more one-on-one, that they, that we can do. We've done a lot of, we had a hard time figuring it out because it's always... So we kinda did our own thing and, um, did a lot of team teaching at first. She came, and she came in and taught full, full-on and I just kinda helped if I was the background and helped with our kids. And now I'm trying to take that. Just have a hard time letting go. I mean, even one of our kids said, the parent came in and she's like, "Kid, said something about Miss Gilligan." And she's like, "Well, doesn't Mrs. Gilligan teach?" She goes, "No." I went to her yesterday when I was here teaching all day, but anyway, that's good. I'm glad that they see her as equal. And she's also brought so much back to us as a team, you know, Brady and Tanner and I, that, you know, the, some of those classes that she's taken, she's like, "No, that's not my quote, too." She helps me a lot with that. She brings in great ideas. I learned about personalized learning, what it was. I'm like, "Yeah, how do we do it?" So we were kinda reading through it. She went and got how to do it. And so then we combined and it's been amazing. So, um, does she need to be a teacher for a while? Just keep going? All right, so the other thing that I'm supposed to talk about is my leadership academy that I did this year because I had Katie. I will say that it was probably one of the best PDs that I've ever been in. Just be, I think because of the length of it, you know, you did it once a month. Friday night, Saturday, Monday night. But, you know, as, as grueling as it was, it was very worth it. Some of the ones that were my favorite was Dr. Zhao. He talked about personalized learning, something that Aubrey and I have been waiting for forever. And I'm like, "Hey, they're doing it! Where are you?" You know, like, but now we're gonna see maybe. So, um, if we, it does personalized learning and just letting kids learn what they really are interested in. And it was really amazing what we saw in our kids and, because we started it in science. And it was just, it blew us away. It really did. Um, with their latest projects, we've now since moved into another... Unit? Yeah. Another unit of science and, um, they're all going home to go into the next one. It's just fun. It's a lot of fun.
The level of learning in it has been all the same, what they...
Oh, what they pulled out of it. Yeah, what they, what they produced in their projects was so much higher than what I would've ever expected them to learn out if I would've just taught ecosystems or body, human body systems. But what they pulled out of it was amazing. Really, truly amazing.
Great, great, great. I'll second that. My son comes home every day talking about this group.
We push him. She made, she told me that I made him cry when they're like... Which takes me to my neck. One of my other favorite ones was Dr. Will Jau and he talked about the thinking classroom, which I push and just aligned in our now club. And I have the higher level kids that we need that extra push. And, um, because they already know the fact, they already know all that stuff. And we push them hard and we give them projects that they really have. And do a lot of inquiry-based learning and, uh, they ask me a question. I'm like, "What do you think?" I wanna make them do the thinking because a thinking student is an engaged student. That's the quote from him. Um, another one was involving our families when we're meeting them, not just involved and engaging them. And that's one that I really think as a school, we need to work on, but also, and I think we are, but, um, and myself to, you know, not just involve, but engage. And they know they're super positive, so we need to know more from them and not have them as the audience and us just to show, you know, that, um, involve them in everything that we, we do. Because, as you'll see, we're gonna have to build learners through a graduate profile that we have that's mandatory in Montana by next March. And all districts that we will have to build a learner for, for that future that none of us can even imagine. It's, it's crazy how fast our future, or what's happening in our world, changes. So we just need to prepare those kids for that.
So with this teacher residency program, the teacher leaders as well as the executive leaders were to attend PD. Um, and we were actually acknowledged, Kim and I, at our award ceremony on Friday night. So we were the only team. Most of them were either just the principal or superintendent or just the, the teacher that was, had a residence. So, um, we were actually the only one that had a team there, which the, um, family, the graduate profile, a lot of those, we actually attended the same PD. And so, uh, like, and the personalized, so when Dr. Zhao actually gave us opportunity to work together and say, "Well, how can we do this?" That was her first question, "How can we do this?" I'm like, "Well, let's start. We start simple. Let's start with science." And so we were actually able to work together and make that happen. And keep, and we'll keep growing with it as well. Family engagement was another one that we had also attended as well and, um, really made us work on what is family engagement versus just being involved, right? Um, and so like this year, the first thing I did, just to keep it simple, was changing our luncheons to family lunches versus parent luncheons. And our family luncheons have tripled. I mean, just huge now. It's amazing the people that show up for lunch. It used to be just our littles that would have everyone show up for lunch. Uh, we still have fifth grade lunch left, but, uh, third grade, I was pulling tables and chairs out everywhere we could find because we didn't have enough space for everyone to have lunch that day. So it was just really cool to get everyone in there. But now to take it a step further, actually have those conferences where families are engaged to learn strategies they could do with kids, um, what the, you know, understand what it is the kids need to learn. Um, and turn those kids into what they call them, expert learners. How do we make them these expert learners? And part of that is that graduate profile. And that's, um, OPI has, is bringing down that a lot of other states aren't doing. And we had a, a school come in from back east that actually had theirs for five years. And they went through the process with, uh, of how to build that graduate profile. And they talked about what is it our kids will need to know for the future world, right? We have no idea. We really don't. You know, one, one of the great examples is I was in Phoenix right before this and I rode in a self-driving car. I mean, it was just amazing. Those are things we don't see here, you know, and I don't know whether we'll see them here. But our kids need to be prepared for that. And so this profile builds on that. What is it? And it's the whole community, everyone is involved on creating that profile. Because not just as educators, but parents have a vision of what they feel. Community members, businesses, they have a vision of what they feel our kids, what skills and knowledge that they base they'll need to know for the future. So it's more of a community, what the community feels that that should look like. And then it's, there's, they call it a graduate profile, but a lot of it is all, is more like a profile, like a K-12. It's not just high school. That's one of the misconceptions. It's not just high school. This should be a K-12, what we want them all to build on. Profile of learner, yes. There, there's, they call it two different, yeah. The profile of learner instead of a graduate profile, yeah. So these were, um, these are some of the same, you know, we got to attend some of the same. Some of the others were, were different. Um, one of the big ones I felt was a huge for, um, I mean, there's multiple that are, they're great. I, I really felt the PD was phenomenal. Um, one that really stood out to me was called Story Brand. And, um, it's a marketing tool that they use for communication. And the first thing I did was text my daughter, because she's marketing, and she's like, "Oh yeah, I know that very well." But it walked you through all the steps on how to communicate so that we're actually heard. And I really feel that, um, board members, teachers, everyone, really, administrators, everyone needs to see that. They need to go through that process because we all, we hear that all the time, our communication, our communication, right? So how can we fix that? And this was one way they walked you through that, on how to do that. And it was really powerful on the steps to do, to do so. And what, what you started with and the end result and how it changed the message came across. And so we, um, for next year, we've already got one teacher that has volunteered to do the teacher residence, to be a teacher leader. Um, but then this weekend, this last weekend, they did mention that, um, someone has requested our district begin. And so Ms. Gilligan has offered to take on a second year. So, um, we're gonna be have two teacher residents.
I think it's good to share that.
So, and it really is, is, I feel that, that we're, you know, we want educators to be here. We want people to come here, no matter what our schedule looks like. We want strong teachers. And so this is a great way to grow our home. It really is.
Questions?
How did, how did the, the residency work with the implementation of the new reading program?
We learned it together.
Have held hands as you walked into the...
Have held hands as you walk into the fire?
Yeah. It was, we did, and that, the science, because Aubrey taught science for years. And I'm like, I don't want to have science for a long time. So Katie loves science, and so she
Well, it's, it's nice, I suppose, under, under the residency. Cause to, to feel like you don't have to jam everything into an eight or a 12 week process. Cause it seemed like when a student teacher comes in, it's almost like a new employee. I mean, it takes probably half their time. I mean, the, the first couple of weeks, they know where to get coffee and where the bathroom. You know, but just to be able to get a, a comfort level as they, they move through that and knowing that there isn't a rush.
You know, and I, and I
And I know that the program's been expanded legislatively.
Yes, they did. They had three years for next year and they did get approved, so.
Yeah, so which is wonderful.
As any of us, as any of us that have been teachers and gone through student teaching and all that, we, we all know it's not even close to enough to make you feel ready and prepared when you step into your first teaching job. So, um, that's great to hear that.
It's just to see her grow over that, you know, like, like you said, when it's that short, it's hard to see that growth. Whereas when I hired her for the first time, she was so nervous and she was like, oh. And I just kind of walked in, we talked about it, we, although I, sometimes I struggle. She'd come up, I'm like, can you fix that board, please? But, um, it just was, it was great to have, I felt like she was like teammate. I mean, I did have to teach her in the beginning, you know, like the ropes, but then she became my teammate.
And not only a great benefit for, as a student teacher, I also felt that it was a great benefit for our district. Just in the fact that, um, it brought a new, some, a lot of new things for Kim as well, the teacher. And she was able to take that back to the team. And we've got some ideas that we're looking forward to for next year to keep it even, you know, grow it even more for like the personalized learning. Um, I make you cry. I made her cry last night. But it also, um, it put this little fire in her as well. Um, she was talking about retirement and now she's like, I want to do this. I want to keep doing this. But not as soon, not as soon, but she's like, I want to do this now. She just got this, there's just this fire in her now. She wants to do more things. And there's just, she's got the vision now and I'm really excited for that as well.
And to see that it worked, that was like
If it keeps, if it keeps doubling every year, every couple of years, I mean, to go from one to couple and, you know, maybe with, you know, having great people like Katie coming out of the program, or say, with, you're able to, to really speak to the benefits of, of, you know, cause it's almost, it's kind of like an apprenticeship.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, to be, to be able to, like you say, feel like you don't have to pack everything in. And then you're able to, osmosis is actually kind of a good thing, you know? Yeah, let, let it set in and not feel like you're rushed. So that's absolutely wonderful.
We really felt the importance to share this with you because it does cost the district a little bit of money. But we really wanted you to understand how, what it has done for us this year, just the one year we've done it now. And really looking forward to the next year and hopefully we can keep it going and maybe expand it to some upper grades.
Yeah, I would just say thank you to both, you know, Christina and Kim, especially I know it, it took some extra time. Took some extra hours. Uh, we appreciate you being willing to to put that in, cause that, that does mean a lot to the district. And, you know, Katie, we are extremely happy that the program was a benefit to you and that you've decided, you know, to stick around and make Townsend Schools, you know, your permanent place, or hopefully a permanent place of employment. So that, that is a, a good thing to see. And, you know, that's what the goal of moving forward. You know, taking a step out to, to try the program. And so it brings great satisfaction that it, it worked for everybody and that it did accomplish what it was set out to do.
I don't think, I think our kids benefit hugely, you know, I do too.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, so we have one that's all exciting and good to bring there.
And, and thank you for coming and, and presenting that to the board. We do appreciate that.
Okay, we will move forward with consent action items, minutes and warrants. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent action items as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent action items as presented. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed, motion passed. First action item, canvass the votes of the school board election.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Angie Paulson. I am Robert County Clerk, every quarter, an election administrator. I am here to help you canvass the votes tonight. And in front of you, you should have the canvas of votes and declaration of results, a copy of this. And I will also pass around, um, a printout that came directly from our machine. If you would like to compare these to what you will read off tonight, okay? So this comes from our election machine that we ran all our ballots through. You will notice on there that there is a provisional ballot number added. And for those of you who do not know what a provisional ballot is, it is somebody who did not sign their envelope or they were missing information and their ballot didn't count right away. So we have to reach out to them. And they have a certain amount of time to sign it and then we can count their vote. So we had one of those that actually got us their signature. So you'll see the addition on the total votes there. Those numbers are, uh, the same as the totals to the right, the right column, far right, totals on the canvas of votes and declaration of results.
Okay, I will go ahead and read, uh, the candidates and the votes. Chase Patrick Reagan, six hundred and six. Jason Cool, five hundred and twenty-eight. Daniel Truesdale, four hundred and ninety-five. Andrea Rice, four hundred and thirty-three. Kevin McDonald, four hundred and twenty-five. Heather Anderson, four hundred and six.
If you would please sign the original. Need each of your signatures.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the election results as canvassed.
I'll move to approve the election results as canvassed.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the election results as canvassed. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All those opposed, motion passed. Next, we will have the swearing in of the new board members. But really quick, I wasn't quite sure where to add this. Um, but I have a letter from Kevin McDonald that he asked me to read. So I would like to do that very quickly. Townsend School Board Administration and Faculty, I am unable to attend the meeting tonight and wanted to share a few thoughts. First of all, I am grateful to have had the opportunity to serve on the board. It has been a positive and varied experience. I am glad there is so much renewed interest in the school and so many good candidates running for the board. It is interesting to recall my reasons for initially wanting to be on the board and how my thoughts about education have changed and also remain the same. Someone once advised me that at times it is helpful to remember initial motivations and ideals for beginning an endeavor. Through my experiences, I have found that by doing so, I gain a fresh perspective and renewed energy. To enter the educational field, I imagine requires a high degree of idealism. Wealth and fame are typically not in the equation. I am grateful for the education my children received and am grateful for the dedication and professionalism shown by the Townsend Schools faculty and administration over the years. You are the ones who make it work. The new building can be designed to be safe, but it is not secure itself. It can be designed to welcoming the community and parents, but it cannot bring them in. Spaces can be built to facilitate learning, but the teachers engage the students in meaning, meaningful learning. I still believe a good teacher with a chalkboard and a notebook is better than a disengaged teacher with a Chromebook and a smartboard. Unfortunately, there is no, that's a big word. Panacea, to solve the challenges that face education today. Yes, fantasy, sorry. Don't ask farmers to read things like that. What we have are the people who are dedicated to educating our students. I wish you all the best and hope that you find time to reconnect with those ideals that initially led you into the educational field and keep you motivated. Best regards, Kevin McDonald. I guess with that, before we, I just want to say, uh, thank you to Kevin and to Todd both. I appreciate working with both of those individuals. Kevin, you know, gave, I think fifteen years, if I remember right. Kevin taught me a lot. I have a lot of emails from Kevin and I got a lot of hand slaps from Kevin. But I, I appreciated that. And I go back, I keep those emails. Because every once in a while, it, it comes time that I need to go back and read those again and remember the things that, you know, he has given me for guidance. Um, I appreciate Todd and what he brought, you know, to the board. His expertise on policies and agreements. Um, I can't even begin to elaborate on the amount of education I've received um, from that partnership and learning, you know, the importance of really looking more closely at those documents and making sure that they all truly say what we think they say and that we can move forward, you know, all with the same goals and the, the ideals of accomplishing the same thing. So I, I appreciate Todd being here for the last five years and for all Kevin has done. Um, I appreciate Sean as well, that, that same experience has come from that. So I, I, I look forward to the new chapter and where we're headed. But I truly appreciate the experience that, uh, has been the last few years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I appreciate it. And, and I, I hadn't really prepared anything, um, other than, you know, this is a great school district. It's a great community. Um, when my family and I located, relocated, um, back to Helena in 2014 to take care of family, uh, we found the best place to live was actually just across the county line and a little friendlier taxing jurisdiction than, and what we also appreciated was school district. Um, advanced that a couple of years and my wife asks me, geez, you know, we really need to get involved in our kids' school. How do we go about doing that? So I don't know. What's your idea? And she said, well, they've got a school board election coming. And my, my first election, I was kind of like Ross Perot. I didn't win it, but won just enough to mess it up for the rest of the people. So, you know, I, we, we had a, uh, a trustee that, um, ended up leaving his term prematurely. So I was asked if I could come on. I was the next highest vote getter after these two, um, sitting here at the table. And so I, I did do that and had three elections over the course of five years. Um, did two single year elections and then a, a, a three year term. So it, it's been very good. But yes, I, I, I think that, you know, as trustees, we bring our skills and our strengths to that. My occupation is administrative rules, policies, procedures, and as a hearings examiner. So that was what I brought to that. I wanted to make our policies legally sound, that they were actually able to be read, that they were accessible. That I, I kind of found myself at odds because I was the only person that really saw those documents for the holes and misunderstandings and the things that had just been perpetuated over the course of time. So that was one of the things that I tried to triumph. And, you know, four and a half years later, we, we have a comprehensive overhaul of our policies. Um, we've redone some of our procedures as well. And, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that this board led this district through COVID, through a twenty million dollar building project, through a change administration. Um, and it's basically, I mean, it's for personal reasons. I have a ninety-one year old mother that I am taking care of, who's requiring more time. I'm taking on more at work. And so when I kept looking at, at, uh, Jason, the board, where things were going and trying to find that spark and that motivation, um, you know, I, I'm a firm believer in seasons. And, you know, my season on the board has come and it's time to plug myself back into some caregiving and some other endeavors in life. And just because, um, I'm going now that I, I know what actually happens, you know, on the second Tuesday of every month, you know, there, there will actually be probably at least one extra butt in the seat out there. So, you know, I, I will be, you know, probably enough of a pain to, you know, to at least be noticed and, um, am available as the board needs to, you know, either continue on with other endeavors or, you know, for some historical perspective. Because that is one thing that I think in boards that ends up lacking severely is that institutional knowledge. Like history is the biggest predictor of the future. And, and there are certain things that we will, certain errors and mistakes that will be repeated if it isn't for somebody that is able to stand back and at least have historical perspective. And so, um, with that, you know, thank you, Jason. Thank you, Vanessa. Um, I, I too also, you know, do appreciate the work that, that Kevin and Sean have done as well. So, um, with that, I guess I will cede the seat and, uh, take the spot out in the crowd. Thank you.
Yep, you're up still. Chase and Jason can approach the front.
You want to face the face of life, but it led me to melt in your eyes. I, Chase Patrick D. Reagan.
I, Chase Patrick D. Reagan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And I will, I will discharge the duties
And I'll discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Townsend School District Number One.
As Townsend School District Number One.
Board trustee.
Board trustee.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So helping God.
So helping God. Thanks, Angie. Appreciate it.
Excuse me.
Chase Jason.
Welcome.
I, Jason, cool.
Do solemnly swear.
Sow.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
The Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I'll discharge duties of my office.
As Townsend School District Number One.
As Townsend School District Number One.
Board trustee.
Board trustee.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So helping God.
Were you in the signs made already?
I utilized the children.
Put the Jasons next to each other. I don't like that. Yeah, right.
All right, gentlemen, well, there's nothing like getting thrown into the fire. So, um, we will move on with the board re-organization. Um, so after an election week, each year, we have to make a motion to appoint a board chair, a vice chair, and we also have a motion to approve, uh, the district clerk. After that, then we will go through the, the committee assignments. But I will open the floor for a nomination for the board chair. highest vote, if I remember. That would seem most likely, but I think we'll need to, I need to verify on that.
Could we do a motion and pass it with part of the motion?
No, because we can't do any motion that isn't on the agenda. It's not on the agenda, we can't take action on it. So we will just have to leave as far as filling that vacancy until the next time. But I guess there's a few other committees that we need to probably keep going and fill those spots and then we likely just have to circle back next month or whatever opportunity we have to bring that new board member in. Is there some committees? Have you guys had an opportunity to look at those and have some interest? I guess I'm going to start with the negotiations committee, just because that's something we're actively involved with. So like it or not, I probably need to stay on that one in order to keep that process where we're at. I also had some discussion with MTSBA today around that. And if the board, the current board is okay with it, it is still acceptable for Todd to participate in that, as he has been in it from the beginning. We can also still put a person in this position and have that person attend those meetings as well, but I think it might facilitate the flow of those negotiations moving forward. But again, that is at the will of the board. If, if Todd would, and I, and I did talk to Todd, I can just throw his name out there. Just this time, so. So is there anybody that would like to volunteer for the negotiations?
Real quick clarification, where's the budget? Where's the budget committee at? Is there a budget?
There isn't a specific budget committee because we do all of the budget work as the board as a whole.
Okay.
Vanessa, I guess you've been on the negotiations as the alternate. I don't know if you want to slide into that more permanent position or not.
Um, it doesn't matter to me. That's a kind of a big budget item.
Put me down if you're okay with it, so.
Okay. Jason, I guess is there any?
I'm happy to do curriculum. I'm happy to jump into the library. Whatever.
My golly, if you'd volunteer for that one.
All right. I got two, so I'm off the list.
Um, let's see. Community involvement, I guess Vanessa, is that one you'd stay on?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, operations, I guess is another one that's still pretty big and going on and we do have a facilities meeting coming up. I'm happy to stay on that one if there's somebody else that would like to join in that one.
Can you expand on the student services committee? I'm just trying to weigh which ones I want to.
Right. So we, the one we probably deal with the most would be activities in terms of committee meetings. You know, we meet on average probably two to three times during the school year. This year, the topics were adding like the middle school golf program. There's some discussion I know being had on baseball. Those types of things begin with the committee meetings. A committee looks them over, listens to the presentation, and then brings those to the, to the full board from there. Most of these are just an opportunity for a smaller group to kind of get the ball rolling on some things and then bring the larger items after some of the basics have been hammered out, you know, to the full board.
Okay. I'd do that one, Jason. Let's find the student services committee.
Student services, okay.
We have an active technology committee, too. We need to pre-raid on it, too.
Okay, all right. That one you don't want me on.
I could probably make you a Zoom one, right? Pardon me?
I would volunteer for the student services committee as well.
Okay.
Should I get my Zoom joke?
What's that?
Zoom joke.
So I want to leave a few curriculum. I guess let's go back to operations. Anybody volunteering for operations?
You can probably get the next, next trustee member as well on some of these.
Right, that's why I'm trying not to fill them all. But you only have one at the moment, right?
Uh, library and curriculum, I'll do.
Oh, you said curriculum, that's right. Okay.
I can also jump in community involvement, needed a second there.
Okay. Did you get all that, Casey?
Uh, yeah.
You think so?
I think I do.
Okay.
I think we're still looking for an operations.
Yeah, I think we'll leave, since we have, you know, I'm on that one, I think we'll leave a couple of these open until we do fill that fifth board spot because we want to make sure that individual has an opportunity to. So we will revisit this again as soon as we have that vacancy filled. Okay? So we do need a motion to approve the updated committee assignments thus far.
I'll move it as discussed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updated committee assignments as discussed so far. Is there any further discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Request the county election administrator to conduct the 2023-2024 elections. This is a procedural thing, you know, once a year, we have to, as the school district, set who will conduct our elections throughout the coming year. Pretty straightforward on who will do that.
I moved or approved the request to the county election administrator to conduct school election during the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request to the county election administrator to conduct school elections during the 2023-2024 school year. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Approval of MHSA annual application fees. I guess Brad probably has a little.
So dues this year totaled $4,000 for the sixteen combined activities, plus $381 for catastrophic insurance and $121 for concussion insurance. There is an enclosed annual dues application and fee reimbursement form for your information. And so the total payment would be four thousand, $4,502 for sixteen activities based on 172 speakers.
There's also a mistake. I don't know what it is, but anyways, there's also a mistake on here. Voice wrestling, for some reason, did not get checked.
I wondered if we were going to have a voice wrestling.
Yes, so I don't know what, because we actually helped Superintendent Helen do that, and for some reason, the copy that's originally here is not correct. So we need voice wrestling.
Uh, so is this going to go up if?
So it, um, there is a range based on the number of activities. I'm not sure, it might be on your form. If it is, it's a combination of enrollment and activities. So I do not know if the one additional activity, this is actually a slight decrease from last year based on slightly lower enrollment, so.
Yeah, I do not believe that it is going to change the total cost because as he indicated, it's mostly.
Right here, Jason. Could be changed at seventeen.
Seventeen, two hundred and fifty. Forty-two, fifty.
Yep, that is correct.
Double checking to make sure somehow from the draft of the disoriginal copy site about this, so I'm just making sure it counts.
So I guess, Brad, who puts this document together? The one that we're going over right now?
I would, I believe the, probably the superintendent. I don't know, I'm full and athletic direct, activities director, probably contribute information to that, but it is filed by the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's, the rest is all good. I don't see any other.
All right, does it, because it doesn't change any of the benefits? So that one event would change the total then to forty-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. Four to seventeen events. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve payment of annual dual dues for MHSA participation of $4,502.
No, forty-seven-fifty-two.
Forty-seven, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the payment of the annual dues for MHSA participation of $4,752. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Approve the solar contract with Bozeman Green Build. As our construction management representative mentioned earlier, this is part of the rerooft, which is part of the hail claim that the district encountered, I believe in 2019, and have been working to get the roofs repaired. We went out to bid originally as one big project and we only got one bid and it was way high. So with their help and with the help of the architects that we have, we broke it into pieces and we did the middle school and the library portion this year and we're doing the high school portion this summer, excuse me, we did the one last year. And they're getting ready to start the high school. On top of the high school, there's solar panels. Part of the reason we struggled to get that original bid is because nobody wants to touch the solar panels that is familiar with how to handle them and how to store them and how to get them on and off. So this is basically a subcontractor that's going to come in, remove those panels with the crane, as he indicated, take them off, store them, and there's actually in that cost is a repair of two of the panels that are not functioning. Once the rerooft is done, this group will come back, reinstall the solar panels as part of that contract. That is what that is.
Do we own those solar panels or are they leased?
No.
Are we tracking how much money we get back off the grid or? Just curious.
I'm not sure. I believe it was at one time.
I spoke with Jim about it, actually. Jim Riddle, our, our head of maintenance, and he did say that we are putting, putting energy back, back to the grid and that they're very efficient and that it, it's, it's been a good thing for the district from what it sounds like.
Good.
We had to talk to Jim for specifics.
Thank you.
When was that original project bid, that was way too high that you got one bid for?
Two thousand twenty, it was the winter of, no, it would have been twenty-one. Because we started doing the design in twenty and that part of the delay was, of course, that's when COVID hit and we couldn't find contractors and all that stuff. So I think that that bid went out in two thousand twenty-one. We received, you know, the insurance company paid us the depreciated value on that roof, which we got a check for, I believe it was $1.3 million. But that is not the recoverable portion or the replacement cost. And that's where we brought Shane in because he was already here helping on the main building project and that, that has been a big help because I know Eric was working on it before he left and struggling with getting, you know, somebody to bid the project, going out with all the documentation and then making sure that the thing was followed through. And Shane's been a huge part of keeping the insurance company caught up and them recognizing that, yes, that the depreciated value that they paid will not cover the cost to replace it. But by doing the two combined bids, we did come in lower than the one combined bid before by almost $400,000. Is there a motion to approve that?
I will move to approve the solar contract with Bozeman, Bozeman Green Build as presented.
I will second it. The motion to approve, motion moved and seconded to approve the solar contract with Bozeman Green Build as presented. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
There's the contract for the one you just approved. What's the value on that?
Fifty.
Fifty-eight thousand, six seventy-five is the cost of work.
Thank you.
And we're using insurance proceeds partly and some from general fund to fund this or?
No, that should be, that should come entirely out of.
So we've held that, how's that been held, the 1.3 that we received?
It's in the building fund.
Okay. Is it like in a CD or is it just in?
No, it's held at the county with all of, all of the schools, but different, different, Casey can probably answer the question better. Everything's coded differently in those accounts and you can see them in the.
And are we tracking how much money we get back off the grid or? Just curious.
I'm not sure, I believe it was at one time.
I spoke with Jim about it, actually, uh, Jim Riddle, our, our head of maintenance. And he did say that we are putting, putting energy back, it, back to the grid and that, um, they're very efficient and that it, it's, it's been a good thing for the district from what, what it sounds like.
Good.
You have to talk to Jim for specifics.
Thank you.
When was that original project bid, that was way too high that you got one bid for?
Two thousand twenty. It was the winter of. No, it would have been twenty-one. Because we started doing the design in twenty and that part of the delay was, of course, that's when COVID hit and we couldn't find contractors and all that stuff. So I think that that bid went out in two thousand twenty-one. We received, you know, the insurance company paid us the depreciated value on that roof, which we got a check for, I believe it was one point three million dollars. But that is not the recoverable portion or the replacement cost. And that's where we brought Shane in because he was already here helping on the main building project. And that, that has been a big help because, um, I know Eric was working on it before he left and struggling with getting, you know, somebody to bid the project, going out with all the documentation and then making sure that the thing was followed through. And Shane's been a huge part of keeping the insurance company caught up and them recognizing that, yes, that the depreciated value that they paid will not cover the cost to replace it. But by doing the two combined bids, we did come in lower than the one combined bid before. By almost four hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve that?
I will move to approve the solar contract with Bozeman, Bozeman Green Build as presented.
I will second it. The motion to approve, motion moved and seconded to approve the solar contract with Bozeman Green Build as presented. Is there any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Is the contract for the one you just approving, what's the value on that?
Fifty.
Fifty-eight thousand, six seventy-five is the cost of work.
Thank you.
And we're using insurance proceeds partly and some from general fund to fund this or?
No, that should be, that should come entirely out of.
So we've held that, how's that been held, the one point three that we received?
It's in the building fund.
Okay. Is it like in a C D or is it just in?
No, it's held at the county with all of, all of the schools. Different, different, Casey can probably answer the question better. Everything's coded differently in those accounts and you can see them in the.
Oh, yes. A quick reference would, you would see them right away with the whole panel bases in the late night.
Again, not that.
He's asking where, how is the money held, like that, the building fund?
Oh, yes. We have, we're broken out into projects.
Sorry, in this case, we had, we received an insurance check, correct? So it's, it's money coming in, it's not necessarily money coming from our tax dollars. So if it's a check that came to us, can we take that type of money and put it into a C D? Or put it into some type of investment to get in, interest on that money while we figure out we're placing the, the roof or not?
The building fund actually does gain interest, um, through the board of investments, just like all of the county money does. And that interest is accounted for.
Do we know what rate that is?
That is all held with Melissa Franks, our, um, county superintendent who handles all of our investment funds.
Okay. Melissa Franks?
Melissa Franks.
She's the county treasurer.
Okay, sorry.
Nope. There's going to be lots of questions and we'll get through them. Any further discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed. Personnel items, uh, summer camp employment.
So, uh, Mrs. Hartman has a very robust schedule of camps for the summer. Looking to approve the hiring of Jenna Frazier, Sheila Rivera White, Tyler Patrick, Katie Goodman, Sherry Tony, Dan Hazlitt, Suzie Hedlund, John Bliley, Josh Eggers, Gary Bowman, Mike Anderson, Justin Hoblen, Nakaya Mondragon, Scarlett McDaniel, Whitney Robertson, Christina Hartman, and I believe the addition of Gail Blair with that for the 2022-2023 summer camp employment.
Thank you.
Based on that, on background checks, among the backgrounds.
Based on successful background checks.
Yes, for those that are going, not currently employed.
Not currently employed.
What's the dollar amount associated with this?
It's the, all the, for their salaries to pay for summer, to run summer camps, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, is it, it, in addition to their base salary or is it part of or?
Oh, no, it's addition because this is totally separate, it's completely separate from school.
It's an hourly rate for each, for each person that works a camp is, uh, receives an hourly rate. And is that, um, hourly rate based on, um, number of years with it or experience or is it a solid flat rate?
It's been a flat rate.
Okay, and what, what hours of the day are?
Some of them are overnight camps, some of them are just during the daytime, there's multiple.
Weekends, weekdays?
No, weekdays, just weekday.
Just weekdays? So, um, like the administrators, do you guys take leave?
This is summer, uh, they're, they, this is all through the summer program after June first.
So this would be above and beyond their basic contract.
Basically employed, just a seasonal job.
Yeah, okay, yeah, again, it's just the new guy, the new guy, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we sometimes assume people know.
The superintendent's paid year round, right?
Yeah, she would not be paid, so she, they just want her on the approved list.
Okay, that's, because that's why I'm asking, I heard her name, so I'm just like, I'm just curious. Her at all.
No, it's just we put everyone on the list of who'd be working on, um, just that everyone's aware of who'd be working on. She, uh, Mr. Wilkerson did one as well for me in the past, um, he used to do a fly fishing camp for me. Um, Mrs. Hedlund's offered to do one for me.
We've got teachers do them and.
Okay.
Yeah, but no, she would not, but they'd like everyone who's, it's just so everyone knows, was aware who's teaching them.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Just like myself, I have a flat, I get paid a stipend, so I'm not paid in the hourly rate, I'm paid a stipend to run the camps and organize.
Gotcha, okay.
Is there a motion to approve that list?
I will move to approve the list, um, pending successful background checks for 2022-2023 summer camp employment.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the, the hire of the list as presented for the summer camp employments for 2022-2023, pending successful background checks on those not currently employed. Is there any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed. Special education extended school year.
We have six students who are eligible for an extended school year and that eligibility is determined through the, uh, uh, I D E A process, I E P process. Mrs. Molly Hansen, uh, has been doing that. Uh, she is currently our middle school special educator, case manager. And, uh, we would like to hire Molly Hansen for the 2022-2023 summer extended school year. And that's in a, and it's basically, uh, an extra duty in addition to her regular teaching contract that is outside of the teaching year.
Is it the whole summer or just into the summer?
It, it varies by student according to their needs, um, what is determined through those, through that process. But, um, it generally, um, is intermittent throughout the summer. She has a number of hours that she works with each student individually.
Some will be like July, part of August, some will be just August, just depending on what's written in the I E P and stuff.
Okay. I'll move to approve the hire of Molly Hansen for the 2022-2023 summer extended school year.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of Molly Hansen for the 2022-2023 summer extended school year. Is there any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed. Uh, resignations.
There are three resignations. We have Office of State Professional Nicole Sandig, uh, K eight counselor Madison Floating and certified teacher, head track and field coach Travis Rowe.
Those can't be all done in one motion.
Those need to be separated out.
No.
It can be.
Did, did Coach Rowe state why he's leaving? Just curious.
Just opportunity for professional growth and advancement to seeking different opportunities.
I would add to that while we're talking about, just, uh, you know, very large public thank you, um, to Travis Rowe for everything he's done for our students, our programs, um, our, our athletic departments, our teams. Uh, he's been very instrumental and we greatly, greatly appreciate his time and dedication to our school district. He will be great for us and we thank him for all of his service for us.
Yes, very much so. Appreciated working with Travis, um, especially his time as the athletic director and whatnot, so he, he will definitely be missed and definitely appreciate what he's done for so many years.
Moved to approve resignations as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resignations as presented. Is there any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Oh, just an alibi, is that all right? With, with that said, when we have someone like Coach Rowe going out the door, what are some recognitions that we're doing as a school to recognize someone like him? I mean, we look back at all his successes, I hope we're just not letting him go out the door.
What they'll allow us to do and they have their, their individual requests on those things, so we will honor Coach Rowe's wishes.
I'll probably have to help him move. I'd say, if he wants more than that, he's not alone.
I sure hope he's watching, that was good, Brad.
So are you?
Just, just know that we, we definitely, um, you know, have those discussions and, and, um, every individual employee has their wishes. And we will, we will honor Coach Rowe's wishes.
So are you telling us that he doesn't want a send off?
I'm telling, yeah.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you, sorry, Chase.
Nope.
Trust me on the under's hand side, we will, we will take care of it.
Okay, moving on to policy review, policy thirty-five ten, school sponsored activities on second reading. I don't know if she left you much to add to that.
Uh, no, um, she recommends the approval of the second policy current five ten as presented or revised that you looked through. She did note that M T S B A made our edits requested.
So. I was gonna say, I kind of want to add to that discussion too. I know Vanessa had reached out and asked for like just a, a list, it is in our student handbook and I apologize for not getting that to everyone before this meeting, but I, I can do a quick rundown of like what's extracurricular, what is considered school clubs, organizations, and I apologize for that, but that should have gotten to me a long time ago. So I apologize, but if that's still pertinent to the conversation, I'm happy to, to, um, have it all here, so.
Yeah, I think we need to know, um, what we are defining as extracurricular, what is going to be allowed, what isn't.
Okay, so the way it's defined in our handbook, um, extracurriculars are usually associated with M H S A sponsored activities or governed activities. And so those would be all of our athletics, everything, you know, all of the sports and athletics, uh, speech and drama. And basically, we kind of just did the rundown with the M H S A approvals of our activities. Those would be the extracurricular M H S A activities. The other activities that are under, in our handbook as clubs and organizations or co-curricular, things that are built into our curriculum, a lot of our C T E clubs are that way, um, would be student council, F F A, F C C L A, B P A, Skills USA. Those are all of our C T E classes that have a co-curricular component with them. So part of our curriculum is also associated with what goes on in those clubs. Um, National Honor Society, we have drama, we have the plays. Um, and then a couple, they're not really in our handbook, they're just loosely associated with the school, Bulldogs Beyond, which we just have the big donkey basketball for. And that's newly started, we've only done one trip and we're doing one more, um, we're doing another one here next year. Um, and then close up, we do have, you know, advisors on staff that organize the activities for those clubs, but they aren't necessarily a school activity, I guess, our students participate in them, I don't know, it's kind of that gray area. Those would be the two that are probably the greatest area. There were some other old ones listed, there was a culture club we have not ever since I've been here, I think maybe way back in fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, we, the Spanish club did something, but that's kind of, um, you know, dis, not disorganized, what's the word I want?
Just banned it.
Thank you, just banned, I'm like, I lost the word. Um, we also, for a long time, had a youth council. Um, our student council has successfully grown to be so active, which is incredible. We're very happy with where the state of our student council is, that it has kind of absorbed many, the youth council and even my principal advisory board, we all work together through student council. So that's been a really kind of a nice mold, you know, merging of those few groups, so.
Would it be easier to answer what is not included?
Yes, no, yeah, there's a lot, we're busy, so.
There's a lot of things that are not included?
No, that's, those are our activities.
Okay.
That, that's the longer list of our, I, I'm sorry, Chase, I thought you were going, but no.
No, no, I'm just saying, because there's a lot of.
We have a lot of activities, that, that, that covers our.
Basically, extracurricular is tied to those events in M H S A rules and district policy. All other things are basically either social events or student organizations.
Right, and obviously there's the class, you know, we have the, all of the classes have, the class have their officers and their class activities that they do. All of those things are within the school. Um, with M H S A too, that was my bad, I forgot, I always forget this, but like District Music Festival is actually an M H S A sponsored event. So, um, band and choir are also included in that, in the M H S A sponsored.
And, and drama is too, I thought you listed that as.
Speech and drama, so the actual, there's two different, that, that's.
Oh, the, the play is separate.
The other are just the school plays, so like our fall play and then we have the spring musical coming up on Saturday. That's just a drama club through our school that does the plays, yes. Speech and drama is actually an M H S A.
Sponsored event.
Sponsored event. Sorry, that's a little confusing too.
So most of the language change that, you know, brought about the second reading is in the social events, you know, items E and F. That's where the bulk of the discussion has been around was, you know, allowing non-enrolled students to come and participate in, you know, the prom. Homecoming, formal.
Possibly when our formal, we have it.
Right.
Dance is mainly, our bigger dances.
So can I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
So perhaps for you or Ms. Everin, or, um, how, how are the ages validated? Like, you're checking driver's licenses, I assume, when you get somebody who's twenty, who wants to come to the prom, are you?
So that's part of, we have an entire process that we go through to approve guests, um, to come and that be invited by obviously one of our students. You know, that's part of where we've had a lot of discussion on how we do that. Um, mainly, when I, when the kid, when the student fills out the top part, the information, the parents have signed it, whatever, I submit that to the administrator at the school that they're coming from. And then they say, yes, this student is, you know, I endorse this student to come, they verify they are a student at their high school, those kinds of things. So we do check that, we do a formal process.
I guess my question is specific to those Broadwater High School graduates who are not enrolled.
Right.
Um, why, one, why is it not consistent with other enrollees? Meaning, why not just keep it flat at age nineteen? Why do we need to allow additional over nineteen? And that, and then second would be, you know, obviously, like you said, you're not checking to verify for those students that they're, I mean, we have their records on file, I suppose, but.
Agreed.
You know, driver's licenses per se, just, just because of the risk of the things that can go wrong when you have.
And, and honestly, you know, yes, it, it is kind of at my discretion. For example, um, I, I had two, um, we had two this year for the prom, former Broadwater High School students, both just graduated last year. So obviously, I'm well aware they're at college, I'm well aware of where they are and what they're doing. Um, they're, you know, they're still a part of our, they're dating kids at our school. Um, that's usually where it falls, we usually don't see many students that are beyond a year out of our high school, that's pretty much common. But yes, that discussion has been had and even by our own staff, that maybe it is best if it's just flat. Um, you know, they have to be a high school age to be a hurry, you know? So, yeah, that discussion's been had many times. We, I guess we offer that as a courtesy to the kids that we know that have been, you know, for example, if Ryan Rock wanted to come back for the prom next year, obviously, um, you know, that would be a different scenario. So there are those situations.
Have you ever had anyone that was twenty or twenty-one not a former graduate that wanted to come or was invited to come?
Um, previously, before we redid the policy, yes. Um, problematic. So that was one of the reasons why we changed it from just the age requirement to a former Broadwater High School student, because then we have knowledge of, you know, where, what they're doing, where they've been. We probably, their parents probably still live here in town sometimes, you know, I mean, just we have those connections still, which is really. Hopefully those answered your questions. Definitely some gray area for sure. It's part of my principal's report, we had, um, a lot of guests at the prom, um, went very well. We obviously went through our system and did our checks and balances that we do and we had no issues, so it went really well. I want to say twenty, probably twenty guests, that's a lot, I don't think I've ever had that many guests attend a prom. A couple of, um, and all, um, two non-enrolled, well, no, four non-enrolled, let me change that. Two high school age, two that were recent graduates.
Just for Chase and Jason, you know, this, this has been the, uh, an item that I have struggled with.
I've watched the meetings.
Okay, all right.
But yes.
I still struggle, I, I still struggle with it. But I understand, you know, there's, you know, we had a student came and presented last time that, you know, that it does mean something to them to be able to invite, you know, a student. know, a student from another district. And I don't wanna hinder that, but at the same time, I, I still feel very strongly that these types of events are for our students and should be for our students. And that's why I don't believe that, you know, we just need an open door policy, but I understand that you can't cherry pick who you're gonna let in and who you're not, so you have to have some formal way of processing those, you know, I hate to call them applications, but that's basically what they are, and being able to verify that these students meet, you know, these qualifications and that, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna relatively minimize our risk of having an incident. Again, I, I could go to, real easily to just saying, you know, it should be for our students and our students alone. MHSA, in my mind, took that away for, or excuse me, the state legislature took that away from us in terms of the sports. I can't fight that, that is what it is. And so I realize we have a mixture of, of kids coming and going, and we have to allow for that and make sure that we are applying by that law. And I believe we are when it comes to extracurricular and MHSA-sponsored events.
So, as I understand it, Mr. Rock and Suzie, you are comfortable with it as it's written? You and your staff are, in your acting capacity, Brad, that's why I ask, but then also, you guys are relatively confident that your staff are supportive of it, is as is? I mean, you can't say everybody, but just...
Yeah, for instance, the middle school policy, yes, very much.
Okay.
And I have spoken on behalf of our staff, you know, that echoes somewhat Jason's, I mean, you know, echoes a lot on Jason's view that, you know, there have to be things that are for our students, you know, they're here every day. For example, the prom is organized, put on, set up, taken down by school staff and students. It's a junior class activity, it's very integral to the culture of our school and the students are here every day. So, yes. But as I said, it went well for the prom. I feel like if there are a few more parameters and criteria that we have discussed, you know, at length, looking at some of these things of how we can, you know, at least make it manageable, you know, I don't know. I guess we have spoken on it many times.
But as it stands right now, you're okay. It's either we approve it as it is or we find ways to reorder it.
Right. So, and it does just address dances, correct?
Correct.
So why do we, why are we keeping social events in there? If we're just talking dances?
I, I agree with the confusion on that, is there... I'm gonna look at it, I've got it on my face here.
Now, when I go back to the...
I've got it.
Because the lawyers put it in.
Yeah, I know. Unfortunately, sometimes they speak for us and we're like, what? Sorry!
It's in section three-nine, but there's not page number.
Oh, social events, I see, I hear. I think social events in general, like section, section two, but then it was section three. This is the same as what we looked at before, correct?
Yeah, and I guess when I, you know, read that, because I think even for our students, you know, there does need to be some defining criteria for those, and I think in my mind, that's probably why that stays there.
So is that at exclusion then from social events? So we're limiting these section F to just dances?
Yes, the, just those items listed in section F.
So then homeschool students, private tool students wouldn't be able to participate in social events?
Correct.
So, so we are taking social events out?
No.
Social events in number two, Vanessa, when I read this, that's addressing all of our students, so like all of our high school students.
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm saying? If we're gonna host an event or a dance at the, for the school, you know, there has to be approval of administration.
There's gotta be chaperones.
It's gotta be at the, on our facilities unless, you know, during COVID, we move it to the park or something, you know, those kinds of things. So I think that just, I think that's where the confusion's coming in, I think that just addresses social events in general. The dance part that we're talking about, non-enrolled students, applies to F only, is that my correct interpretation?
Yes, those, those items that are specifically labeled there.
Okay.
So, as I said, if everyone is good with that language, we need a motion to approve that on second reading.
I'll move to approve the second reading of policy thirty-five-ten as presented.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve policy thirty-five-ten on second reading as presented. Is there any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passed. Alright, very good. Principal's report, Mrs. Hartman.
I'll give you guys each a copy of these, you can peruse them at a later time, some of you may have seen them already.
It's signed up today.
There were a lot of them.
It's checked this afternoon.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, there's a lot of them, a lot of camps, so. So that is one of the items that I do in this year. Besides the after-school program director, I am the summer program, summer camps director as well, and so it's something that's, I actually really enjoy and work really hard to create some really fun events. So there's quite a list of them that we do K through eight, and then I have high school kids as well that we hire each year to give them an opportunity to work with the kids and earn some money. So if there's something there you, you, you would like to see in person, you're welcome to join us and see what it's all about, but all of those people that you approved tonight work really hard to make sure those kids get great opportunities and one of my, the biggest, one of the motto I follow on these is I try and give, give opportunities to these kids that they, they might not get, and try to make the cost of it as minimal as possible and by writing grants and so forth, I've been able to do that, and I've also am able to offer some scholarships. So there are some students that receive these scholarships, so that's how the cost is, it's all covered with the costs and the grants that I write. So it's, there's a lot there, come join us. So to step back on my information, I have the Twenty-First Century Grant is one of those things as well that helps that after-school program. We did write it earlier this year, I was hoping we'd get an answer, I keep putting it on there, they tell us may, and still haven't seen an answer yet of whether we've received that or not. The district did have this grant prior to my involvement with the after-school program, but, so this is the first year that I, that I have the opportunity to write it and see if we can get it. If we are able to get it, we won't be able to, we will be able to supplement our program, I won't be able to supplant it, but I'll be able to supplement it. And so one of those things could be if we, you know, the four-day school week, if we decide to do something on Fridays, that could be utilized for that. But we just don't know yet, so where we are in that process, we're, we're still waiting for an answer. I just wanna put a big thank you out to our Lions and volunteers. We have a kindergarten roundup the end of April. We actually had so many kindergartners sign up again that we had to add a half a day, and so those volunteers were called last minute and rugged another part of a day to get all those kids through there. And so I just wanna do a huge thank you to the Lions members and all those volunteers that helped us that day. I also wanna do a big thank you to our first grade team as well as all of the volunteers they brought in. They had a first grade mini-career fair. It was really cool, they had Cadillac Custom Cabinets, Towns and Seed, Light Electric, the Sheriff's Department, nurses, surveyors, the chiropractor and TK's garage was there. So the kids all got a great variety of different careers and had a lot of hands-on activities for them to see what it's all about. So it was a really cool little career fair, and I want to thank those community members for coming and doing that and giving up their, their half of their day to do that, so. As far as next year and staffing with that kindergarten roundup, currently we have sixty-seven kindergartners for next year. So again, we are up there and we're having a gift ball. And so I know we, the superintendent and I, we've kind of been discussing some thoughts on that and possibly whether, you know, we have to hire another teacher or if we look at a four K, so there's, there's things we're kind of need to look at to what we're gonna do with that number again. We had about seventy kindergartners this year, so we just keep growing. And we keep getting phone calls. This is, Ms. Ferrera, the secretary, wants to know where our open sign is because we've got two phone calls today, so this was new students starting in the mall. So they just keep rolling in. So the additional targeted school improvement, CNA, so the elementary was marked as being an additional targeted school for improvement. That was based on, for Hispanic students, and it was due to their attendance and their testing. And so this is something I'm digging into because it shows that we have nineteen Hispanic students, and this is K-six, so, cause our, our school's seen as K-six for elementary. We have nineteen students, but only six tested, so we need to figure out why, why is that? And then also what we need to do to improve their attendance. The CNA is a comprehensive needs assessment that we needed to complete, and by doing so, that gives us some funding that helps us to address that issue, that area of concern. And the people that took that CNA were staff, parents, Vanessa Flynn was part of that, and admin, and so that will give us some funding to help address that issue. We are on it for one year, where normally that's a three-year, but this is a one-year, as long as we get it corrected, then we'll be off-targeted for the elementary, you're addressed to that.
So, not familiar with this program, can you tell us what it's about? Why is it proposed?
Yeah, so the, with, I might need Brad to help on this a little bit, with targeted, so our district does all their testing, correct? And you can do your state testing, and so you have to have a certain percentage that they look at your, your attendance and your data for testing, for whose proficient and so forth, and then they give you a score on all of these things. Well, because we scored really low in this group with their attendance and their testing, we got, Mark has been targeted, that's, that's an area we need to fix, we need to work on. I do that correctly?
Okay.
I, I hope so, you're the one who explained it to me.
That's how, I, I had to do is, I had to attend the seminars over Easter break even on this, so that's, trying to make sure I got all of it right, but I mean, I reached out and I looked back at my notes again, and that's exactly was based on Hispanic students only.
Okay, so moving forward then is, we just found this out, is that what you're saying? So make contact, is that what we're gonna do with the parents, students, teachers, or what's, what are the next steps?
Well, first I'm waiting for the CNA to see what areas as well, because the CNA has asked all these questions, like what are the areas we need to, you know, you'll look at, so...
What is CNA?
Comprehensive needs assessment. That's where they ask all, certain questions, they ask parents one question, they ask admin questions, I don't know if Vanessa's were different because she was a school board. So then we look at that data and then we look at, see where is the issue? Is it, why is there attendance, right? Is there something that we need to look at our attendance with the kids, is, is there a reason behind it? Is there something we're missing? So I've got all the attendance poll. With the testing, is it, why only six kids did test in that nineteen? Are some of them being, are some of them being requested not to test? So is that something we need to share? So there's still a lot of data pieces, cause like this just happened, I'm putting, trying to put together.
Okay, no, thank you.
And then, last but not least, I wanna acknowledge all of our teachers and thank them, I appreciate everything you guys do. I know there's days that they wanna hurt me a little bit with some of the things they, they need to do, but the hours they put in, but I really appreciate you. And then I wanna thank Mrs. McGulty and Mr. Conroy for the element, the K-five concert, it was awesome, and I don't know who else attended that event, it was very warm, but one concern, and I know there were some people that were kind of annoyed by the situation, but trying to get three hundred and fifty kids in that room, as well as all the families that wanna watch it, it's just not working anymore. And so I, Vanessa was sharing stuff about discussing about splitting that concert in the future, do more of the K-two, have a break and then do a three-five concert, but we just can't get them all in the gym anymore, there's just no way, we're three hundred and fifty-some kids now, so, and growing.
So what's your proposed plan moving forward then?
What I would look at, and this will be reaching out to the families as well, I'm kind of getting some input, but looking at like doing, and I acknowledged it that night, doing like K-two, five-thirty to six-thirty, have an intermission, and then doing three-five from seven to eight. So that way, people who have both grades could stay, but then it lets some file out and others file in.
Okay. And is our audio system down?
It's not very good right now, it's something we need to work on.
Okay.
Yep, because I could not get a microphone to work for the life of me that night.
It's old.
And our wires, this, every time I touch the wires, it just crackle and I just gave up, so.
Okay.
Sound in general in our schools run, like the system in the old gym is not great either, it's just old, it's old technologies, it's old systems.
If I remember correctly, that sound, and maybe Nancy can help me a little bit with that.
Trying to think.
There was, so there were significant upgrades to that, and they, some of that came through funding from that outside organization, correct?
Why did your wife pay for the sound system?
And we...
Thousand dollars, yeah.
And we had it...
Awake?
Yes. Part of the problem with it, quite honestly, is, is, I, I mean, I don't even know, I think we're pretty limited on who knows how to operate it. And I think it could be improved in a couple ways, but I think it's not as, it's not as old as, a lot of things are. No, it is, it is fairly recently upgraded, the one that we use, and, and it's through, you know, the drama program and all of that has, has used it, and it has made some upgrades for that, but that's where the entire system came from, basically.
So was the sound system on a list somewhere of things that could be improved? Is it unofficial, like priority list, where it is on the priority with estimated costs associated with it?
And that might be something for the facilities?
We, we did look at replacing the sound system in the, in the new gym, what we call the new, or the sixty-three gym, excuse me, the old gym, and it was very, very costly, and at that time Superintendent Wilkerson chose not to pursue it. The sound system that's in the new gym, there's not very many of us that know how to run it, and I know that Mrs. Bockham, who's taking over the music position, she knows how to run it, she set it up, as far as I know, hopefully I'm not speaking for her.
No, I'm...
She knows how to run it, Mrs. Ainsley knows to run it.
Yeah.
They're, they're a very limited, limited thing, it's, it's something that takes somebody skilled in sound to know how to do it.
And even with that, I have people set it up ahead of time, but there's still cords and stuff like trying to use a microphone, it just would crackle, and so it just, there is some upgrades that probably could be done to it.
But in answer to your question, I think, I think that could be something that maybe that facilities committee could look at, is they put things in our school and just somebody talked about the historical thing with that, over the years, we have made some, a lot of changes to the one in the sixty-three gym, if you've ever attended games or events there, it's, it's terrible. We actually brought in a company to come and go through it, look and make recommendations and kind of, they gave us several different tiers financially of things we could do, and it was, it was very, very expensive. And we did make some adjustments, I think, and adaptations that we have over the years, but that's one, too, that may need some work in the future. So, okay, that might be something that could be prioritized through that, maybe that facilities committee would be an appropriate place to kind of look at those things.
Be a good place to start, yeah.
Yeah, we were kind of a long way from being the boss of those things. We were kind of blown away with some of the loss of those things. Spaces of that size. And part of the issue in the sixty-three gym was the actual construction of it. The sound is much better and the new one, because there was a lot more acoustic work done and that we call it the new one. I guess it was two thousand and three, it's twenty years old now.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so our last day of school is at nine-sixth, we get out of town, but I believe third grade is the last group for testing next week. So we're almost on with state testing, huh? This week, third grade, I'm, I'm on state testing. Almost there.
Thank you, any questions for?
I got a question for Mr. Conroy. What type of medical testing does a school do for students without parental consent or knowledge? Meaning, I had a couple of first grade parents contact me about the hearing and vision tests that were done this week.
Yep, it's in our.
And no, no one knew that was happening.
It's in our handbook and policy that we do it every year. There's certain grades that are done every year. And so it's in the handbook that they sign.
Okay. Just, just a flyer or a piece of awareness that this was happening would have been helpful.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah, and, yeah, that's good. We, we actually do that with sixth grade students also, I think we're required to, and I think any new student in the district. So yes, I, yeah, we can certainly get. We can certainly get information home.
Just a, like I said, just a backpack flyer would have been sufficient. Just they, they were concerned that the school was doing it without their knowledge.
Right, no, it's good to know. We are done or completing this week our testing the sixth graders. We have quite a few makeups to do. We should be able to get a little wrapped up, kind of a strange testing window this year. But we, and we really, boy, with the weather this spring, we had some real challenges trying to, we try not to test on days. You know, if we have track gone, we have, you know, thirty-something students gone, if we have golf gone, all those kind of things. So we try to schedule around those and we've had to kind of shift our dates around or we get into a real predicament with trying to get all the makeups done. But we got it done, it's, it's, the makeups are manageable and we'll have them all completed. And the kids have been, I think overall, you know, you try to talk to students afterwards, just what do you think? You're always a little nervous and go, that was easy. Shouldn't have been that easy. There's a lot of issues, so going back to kind of the issue with the identify groups or the, the data that the state uses from that. It's sometimes it's, it's frustrating when you walk in and once we, you know, we have to be certified to test, have to be a certified teacher. They have to get certified to administer the state tests. And it's, once the tests are out, we're, we're done with anything with them. We cannot try to influence anything with those students. And it's, you know, as you are in there or you walk, you, you watch them and you have the students done in ten minutes of a test that should be an hour and a half. And it's just, it's hard when you know our district is being, there's a lot of things tied to state testing. And that's, I've always struggled with that. It's good information to have and I think overall it does give a, you know, gives us some good information. It's just, it's some of the things that are tied from a school standpoint. We usually know the students, you know, we, we work with those students all the time. We know the ones that probably gave their best efforts, those that might not, and those that are truly struggling, that's good to know. But it's just, you know, you'll hear me talking about testing a lot through the year because it's kind of a, one of those issues. We, we've worked really hard for a lot of years to get our students where they need to be and, and get our school the scores that we need to be. It's something the schools are judged on, we're proud of it. And it's, can be frustrating when we know we are probably performing higher than what's indicated on those. And it's, you know, it's, it's a flaw in the system, I believe, with some of those things. And I, I feel like we get much better data from our periodic tests throughout the year, our benchmark tests and, and progress monitoring and all of those things that we do where we can really follow students through and see their growth over the course of the year. So we do those too. We try not to make the state test scores be all and all, you know, students qualifying for titles, students qualifying for special services or, or whatever. So we try to use multiple points for those other than just state tests. We have a very cool event coming up May sixteenth at six P M. And I'd encourage everybody to come to that if you could, and that is our Holocaust Remembrance Night. Our eighth graders do a, a very big Holocaust unit that is part of their language arts and English. And something that we feel strongly needs to be remembered, something I think they learn a lot of very interesting things through it. And I think it's very worthwhile for them and I think it's very worthwhile for anybody that attends to see some of the work that they've done, some of the things they study. It'll be in this room. And so if you get a chance, anybody, the public is invited.
And the readings are on the radio, they, they went, they started today airing on the radio. I know there was a little bit of an issue with the timing of it, but I was able to work with the, the radio engineer that puts all that together to make sure it was, was on there. And so now it's.
Thank you, yes, thanks.
Middle of next week, so if anybody tends into the K dogs radio station, they should hear it at the bottom of the hour.
Our students do historical or informational readings that go out on our school radio station. So we started that last year and I think that's a, a pretty cool use of our radio station. What also on the log, is what Mrs. Hartman said about the staff, just the teacher appreciation week. It's sometimes easy to get so busy. It comes at a really busy time in the year and sometimes we don't appreciate, you know, show the, I guess appreciation to our staff that we should. But I think the, the middle school staff does a job that I just, I can't thank them enough for what they do and the way they work with our students. And I think with our setup over there, though, the people working in that school that we have, it would be much, much more, my job would be much more difficult. So I'm very grateful for everything they do and, and I look at our, I've kind of, I guess, maybe I'm going through kind of, I'm at that age where I'm looking back and going, wow, things are wrapping up, but I have my youngest student graduating this year from high school. And I look back, all three students have attended K twelve here and I just am so grateful for what my children have received at this school from time they started kindergarten through twelfth grade. And I look at, you know, my, one of them is going on to be a teacher and I just think says a lot about the influences they've had in their life. And really, really lucky and really fortunate to have my students attend school here. So I'm very grateful to all of those teachers over there. So thank you to all the teachers in our district, past and present. Speaking of teachers, we need more of them. We, Mrs. Hartman left some notes for me to go through about our process for that. But in the middle school, we do have a couple. We have one that is transferring to another area and one retirement. And we will be looking to get those filled and we've got some, I think, some quality applicants for it. And our numbers too are fluctuating a lot where I've heard from several families that plan on sending students to our school next year, which is great. But, you know, we were at some situations where we were already over in certain areas. And we're going to find a way to address those class side issues. Our concert was also this past week and I, the students did a, a great job. I just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Conroy. He is, you know, he kind of stepped in last year, if you're not aware of that, to fill in as a long-term sub. And that is, we had difficulty filling that. He stepped up and took that position for this year and appreciate him doing it. And it's been a lot of fun to work with him and get to know him and, and hopefully he continues to do some something and other things in our district as we do that. So we're thankful for having. If you look through the information in our packet, you'll see this month has been pretty busy with behaviors. And I'm seeing, you know, we, we always see an increase in spring around the holidays and then in spring, it's, it's spring fever. But this year it's just been a little different and there's been some, some challenges and some students I'm really trying to work with to get some things, get them on a better path, hopefully. I'm not sure that I'm leading them to the proper path, there's a point with a few of them, but we're getting there. I've had several parent meetings and worked with some of these students. We have some on kind of some contracts, I guess you would call it, and working with special situations. So we're, we're working on it, but it's been a, a challenging year in that regard. Eighth grade awards night.
Brad?
Yes?
Is there anything that we could do from this side of the table to help you instill more discipline in any way with this situation, I guess?
You know, I, I certainly appreciate that and I think our, our, all of our passports is very helpful in that regard. I think through the policies they pass and through all the things that you guys do as a board. And then when we do have, I think where it really becomes effective is when we do have a student in front of the school board for a disciplinary. I, I really, really try to avoid that because that's usually, by the time one has come to you, I've, there's been a lot of intervention along the way. Unless it's just a, you know, one issue that, that was so, you know, required that. And I think that action you guys take or do not take has a very big impact on them. And in the past, we've really turned some students around with some help from the board when it was needed. So hopefully we don't get to that, but I think, you know, through passing solid policies and, and those kind of things, I think is where it really helped. We appreciate, I think all three of us really appreciate that. And supporting the teachers and their efforts is what they're trying to do. That's where it all starts is with the, generally speaking, is with the teachers who are the first line of intervention with these students.
No, I just want to make sure if, if you're not satisfied with a policy or whatnot, please bubble it up, let us know.
Yeah, certainly.
Always want to continue to refine and make things better.
Thank you very much.
I know in this day and age, you know, with, with safety of our kids, discipline is, is very crucial, I think. And I applaud your efforts to do what you do, so thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you. My last thing is our eighth grade awards night is May twenty-third at seven P M. It is about, generally it's about a forty, forty-five minute ceremony where we recognize the students who have been involved or achieved in certain areas. And then we move them on to the high school. We usually have two board members, at least two board members that come and help hand out the diplomas to the, they create diplomas. Any of you would be interested in that? That would be great. So would you with?
You're going to be there.
Yeah. You have to go anyways, so that'd be great, I'll put you guys down. We start at seven P M. and, or, yeah, that's correct, seven P M., so.
Brad, does that get me out of the cleanup though?
That's a separate committee.
That's right, and I have a feeling we're calling here for it by somebody else. Okay, we will do that, we'll see you that night and I'll try to drop you an email or something and remind you before that. So thank you for doing that, it's, it's a big deal for the kids. That's it, any?
Very good, any questions for Mr. Rock?
Just on the hirings, I mean, we have quite a few vacancies, some leaving and some, how, how does the process work?
He'll talk about that when he gets to.
Yeah, she left some notes for me to go through with you, so we'll.
And then you had one teacher leaving to the different district, why was that?
No, we have one leaving, just a transfer, moving into that band, high school, moving into the band chorus position and then one retirement.
The elementary counselor did go for that.
Yeah.
I thought the lady forgot.
Nope, you missed it.
I just wanted to invite the board too. We have our awards ceremony on May twenty-sixth at eight-thirty in the morning that you're welcome to attend. That's our K five awards ceremony. And then Ag Day that Mrs. Larson puts a lot of time and effort into along with the team, but I want to acknowledge her because she's been doing this for a long time. There's a lot of hours she puts into it, I really appreciate it. And that's on May twenty-fifth.
When was the awards ceremony?
On May twenty-sixth at eight-thirty in the morning. And it's in our elementary gym.
Eight-thirty?
And Ag Day, is that still out at the fairgrounds?
It is at the fairgrounds, it'll just look a little different.
I can't, I drive by every day and go, ooh, okay, that's getting bigger.
Can I ask you another question? Is there still conversation about a one-two convo?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Heffert?
Okay, I grabbed the bulletin, my initial report here, but since everybody else talked about testing, the high school is done, thank goodness. So we got all of our MAPS testing done. We do use MAPS, we use it as benchmark. At the high school level, the, the, the state test or whatever is actually our ACT test that we take with the juniors. And we did get our results back from that too. So the MAPS is more as benchmark, it's more for us internally. We use it to see, make sure that we have kids placed in the right classes or, you know, obviously at the end of the year, we can look and say, okay, you know, how are we going to look at this? And when do we, do we have students that need titles? It helps us evaluate a lot of where our, our students are performing. And overall, we're looking pretty, pretty good in those areas, so chores are encouraging in that area. Just a few big events we've had, we had music festival, Miss Pathma, the prom as I alluded to already. And then touching on spring concerts like everybody else has. I am really proud to report, you know, we talked a lot about Mr. Conroy and his stepping in to do us a, a solid favor and help us out for a year. He's done a fantastic job. Our very small band and choirs did excellent at music festival. The choir received an excellent rating and then our band received a superior rating. So that's fantastic, that's a very competitive state contest and, and district contest and they did awesome. So we're very, very proud of that and that is a lot, largely due to Hartland and his enthusiasm and his knowledge and what he brought to our program this year. So as Brad said, we just can't thank him enough for stepping in and, and helping us make a good program this year with our case for music. And the same with the spring concert, kudos to all of that as well. The prom, as I said, went off without a hitch. I want to thank the junior class students and their advisors, all the ones who decorate, run, set that up, get it all going. They did an awesome job. I want to thank the sheriff's department for showing up and helping us out with security at the beginning just to make sure that everything was in good order so that we can have a fun evening. And it was great, no issues, just had a great time and went off without a hitch. As I've spoken before, since March, we've been in, working in our small, smaller committees and then as a high school staff on the masterclass schedule, are redoing our course description guide, including dual credit, more dual credit offerings and some handbook updates and that. As part of the general staff appreciation, the, the high school staff is amazing, they dig in. We have done some excellent work together in these areas in smaller committees. And then at the end of the year, I kind of just meet, you know, short meetings with each and every one of them, talk about different things with the schedule and, and some of the ideas about behind the places that we're working on. So we're finalizing all of that. Obviously, a lot of things are still up in the air and on hold until we finalize things of the district with where we're going with the calendar and what our master's schedule is going to look like and that. So we are looking, what some of our goals, we are really excited because we have a representative from Gallup and College come, doing a Zoom meeting with us on Thursday, a big lunch meeting with all of the high school staff to look at how we can facilitate more dual credit offerings with the current staff that we. how we can facilitate more dual credit offerings with the current staff that we have and what that would require. A lot of things have changed and flexed since COVID years. We were in the throes of this before COVID and everything came to us screeching out, as we all know. So it's nice to pick this up. Joe Horn's done a great job contacting. We're actually piloting a student, doing a dual credit accounting class right now with his help through Bozeman. She, she works in his classroom at the second half of the day in one of the class periods and then I think once a week she travels to Bozeman to actually engage in there and she will get a dual credit for an accounting class. So we really want to grow that. Through all of these things that we've been looking at, we know we need to do better and help our, especially our upperclassmen, have more opportunities, more flexibility, whether it's internships. I had a really great conversation with a student today about flexing his schedule or opening his schedule up more to not just dual credit college courses, but like career and vocational opportunities. Actually, it's supposed to work for Mr. Hartman and his, which is what this, he works for him already, but he wants more opportunity to grow that and be better. You know, obviously, we're looking at the state, the state requirements and we know kids have to be at school so many hours, but there are ways that as long as they are engaged, as long as they're meeting their requirements and engaging in the coursework they need to at the school, if they're under supervised programs for work or internships and/or college credit classes, we can work with their schedules and open that up a lot more than we have done in the past. So we're really excited about that. Staff's really excited about that as well. Yeah, and still do their activities, their athletics. Obviously, a few things we need to check the blanks for, the boxes for MHSA to make sure they're meeting their requirements within the building, what they have to log for hour-wise, so. We're working on it. We are in the throes, which ties into kind of, we're gonna, we're gonna roll with our seniors. Last day is next Wednesday. I cannot even believe I am saying that right now. We have a lot to do. We're getting a lot of things organized. They are so excited. Don't look at the seniors attendance this last month. Senior I N S has kicked in, so, no, they're doing great. They're very excited. We are finishing up all of their instruction and getting their, their grades logged. They will go through a schedule, the first half of the day next Wednesday. We will have some graduation practice. We'll do our elementary grad walk that we've, that we've started as a tradition for the past few years. It's been so much fun. We'll get them checked out and signed out and then we will send them on their way until we see them on Sunday for graduation. Second half of that day, we're gonna, in our best efforts, register kids for next year. So we are working on how we're gonna facilitate that with some of the things that are still up in the air.
What are the things up in the air?
What's that?
What are?
Just our master's schedule until we know times and whether we can do any zero hours and what we're gonna know from, learn from dual credit and, you know, some of the things just are not cemented yet in our master's schedule. That's probably the biggest, the biggest thing we're trying to get settled, so.
Okay, when do you expect to have that nailed down then?
There's a calendar committee meeting next.
It's all tied to negotiations and everything that's going on, so yeah, it's all a work in progress. We will roll with what we think, I mean, we'll roll with what we presume is going to be very close to what we're working with and get kids signed up. There's always schedule changes and we may have to make some adjustments. The other thing that could change some of that is, you know, where we end up with hiring and filling positions and where we're distributing classes or how we're utilizing staff. We have a lot of things to look at for that as a district, how we're gonna best, most efficiently use the staff we have and then what do we need to, you know, what blanks do we need to fill in and how can we make all that work, so. Yeah, we'll get there. We'll at least get an idea.
Sorry, how many's graduating next week?
Well, we won't know till Wednesday, honestly. I hate to say that, but we have a few that are, we're hoping are gonna make it. We are looking at, I have to think really quickly. Forty-three? I want to say forty-three should graduate next week. Forty-three or forty-four?
Are numbers dwindling down a little bit?
So we've gone through some up and downs in the high school for the grades. Our class numbers are down from past years for a variety of reasons. You know, some of it can be contributed to online classes and COVID. Some of it can be contributed just to the ebb and flow of students coming and going. I think since I've been here for nine years, I believe the highest number of high school students we had, we've had was like two twenty-five. And right now, I think we are one seventy-nine, seventy-eight. It, it changes weekly. We have kids come in, we have kids leave, we have kids, you know, so. So yeah, there are some numbers that are down in the high school. I don't, we have seventy-plus incoming freshmen coming next year, so. You know, I mean, it is gonna redistribute, I'm sure.
I'm just curious, do you guys ever reach out to some of these students that drop off? And just contact with them and say, hey, what's, why are you not coming? Why are you going distance learning?
I sit down with each and every student that comes, withdraw from our high school for a long conversation with the counselors. Where, you know, sometimes these, some of these students have come to us and for a variety of reasons, whether it's family issues, support at home, previous school experience, a lot of them have moved a lot, a lot of, you know, there are a lot of reasons or, you know, they just honest to goodness, don't want to follow the rules, regulations, adhere to things. And they reach that because there is the age of sixteen that they can legally not have to attend school anymore. That, that influences things to some degree as well, so.
There's a large number that are wanting just to work too, is that right?
Yes, and it's one of the reasons why we really are working hard to try to come up with a more flexible schedule, especially our upperclassmen, you know, so that we can figure out how to keep them as enrolled students, but flex enough so that, I mean, we do have kids that seriously, they are helping support their families and they are working and it's legitimate. I mean, they're, they're just trying to help their families out and raise money into the household as well. So the list is long for reasons and a lot of it's our current climate culture. Where we're at now, things have changed and we're just wanting to grow and we're not going to fix all the problems, but we realize there are things that we're trying to address and that's what we're currently working on to make that work.
Last question, do you document like the trends, just to track the trends to make, you know, for historical perspective? If there's anything that we can do, like if your top trend is they want to go work or that's like eighty percent. I'm just curious if you, if you document that, when you have that exit interview, if that's being documented in any way?
So through Infinite Campus, it will tell. There is a section on there that does say, you know, student left for this reason, they're attending an online school. Or they are just dropping out, they're just a dropout. Or a lot of our kids have, have chosen to go online because I think it offers that flexibility of, you know, being able to educate themselves on their own schedule. You know, obviously, there's a lot of views and opinions on that, whether that's a great thing or not, you know, as a traditional educator and knowing what kids miss socially and, you know, their experience in high school. And honestly, you know, they're in a building with a, with very highly educated professional people who know how to teach and who know how to teach subject matter and, and put that through the students, you know, that's always, trust me. I spend hours talking, trying to talk kids in the state with us or trying to figure out how we can help and sometimes there's just nothing I can say to change that. And the counselor as well, Mr. Schmick and, and other, Mrs. Idet, previous counselors have done this. Yeah, it's definitely something that pulls at my heartstrings very hard and I am in tears in my office on occasion when kids leave us, so. Yeah, it's a tough thing and I hope we find some solutions to alleviate some of that and make that better. That's the goal.
Is that a similar trend that you're seeing in other communities?
Everywhere.
Similar to?
This is national. This is not just our community. It's not just our state. You know, I, I spend a lot of time working at the national level and working at the state level with the, with the state board and everywhere. This is, these are trends that are everywhere. Big schools, small schools, it doesn't matter. A lot of these are just across the board. So, yeah. We kind of have the same thing going on with graduation. Obviously, we're very excited to graduate those kids and move them onto the next stages of their lives. Graduation is May 21st at two o'clock. We also, the board usually sits up on stage, the entire board during the graduation ceremony. We have places for you. And we usually ask for a couple of board members to assist and help with handing out scholarship packets and diplomas and those sorts of things. So I also, too, am asking if, if any of you are interested in being two of those board members to help us out with that.
I can do that one too.
You wanna do that one too, Vanessa?
I did it last year, so. You're welcome to step in there if you'd like to.
You got to hand it to your kid. That's the cool part.
Yeah, that's the rule.
If you have a kid. Yeah, when your kid's walking across the stage, you get that honor, so. All right, awesome. Thank you for jumping right in there. It'll be a fun day. It's really hot, just giving you that.
The elementary concert.
Those lights and on that stadium, oh boy. Yeah, it's warm, it's warm. Also, we do keep, we do keep graduation very, we have kept it a very formal event, so just so everybody knows that, we usually, we usually, we use a dress to impress for graduation, so it's pretty formal. Activities, just look at the list, what's not going on, that's easier to talk about, everything. We're in the postseason. I actually got a report from Mr. Rubashon. They finished divisional golf today up in Eureka. I don't even know how it ended up being in Eureka, but that's where it was. We had Peyton Tony finish ninth, so that's awesome. He's going on to state. And Alice Brummer finished twelve for the girls, so she's off to state, so that's exciting. We have two coaches headed off to state in Shelby and I believe that's next week, so they'll go back to back. Shelby's always fun. Hopefully, the Grizzly Bears will be off the course. We've had that happen once before too. We are hosting the district track meet in Belgrade on Friday. We're excited about that. That's a big event. Coach Ral just does a phenomenal job running that event as well. So many of us will be down in Belgrade running that all day on Friday to get those kids qualified for divisionals and then state track after that. We'll have a role with that. The high school play is Saturday. They're only doing one performance this year. We had to rearrange things a lot and as we've spoken many times, scheduling has been unreal this spring with the weather and different things, changing events, so. They are going Saturday at seven. It is a music hall. From what I know, it looks hilarious and she does a great job on our students. It's a really fun night of entertainment, so please come join us for that. You'll see just all the state golf. Divisional tennis will be happening in Billings. We have the Holocaust night, as Brad spoke to seniors last day. We'll move to divisional track, graduation, eighth grade awards, state tennis. It just rolls eight day, on the last day of school. And then as always, well, not as always, but a lot of the times state track will be after we get out of school. It's that weekend, so it'll be the 26th and the 27th, so. Nobody should be bored. Everybody should have something to do and something to attend. We have lots going on.
Any other questions for Mrs. Hever? Or excuse me, Mrs. Hever, before I move on to Mrs. Hever. All right, Brad is going to give superintendent's report.
So we have been awarded the competitive REAP rural school grant for 2023, 2024. We're still awaiting terms and award totals. And that, I believe, is rural education, academic progress. We do know that it should be ten to fifteen thousand dollars. We haven't told the exact amount and they have not told us exactly how that can be used, but it should be along the same lines as Title I and Title II monies, which can be used to offset some services we provide students academically. Mrs. Hever is looking forward to all of the upcoming activities the principals covered and she enjoyed the music concerts. We are currently accepting applications and have the vacancies below posted. She's reached out to all the applicants to let them know what our schedule is of interviews. We are hoping to tomorrow review applications, go through all those and interview the week of the fifteenth. And the positions that are currently posted, high school science, broad field, K-8 certified middle school teacher, K-5 certified elementary, which is a one-year position, K-8 certified elementary Title I teacher, head wrestling coach, ball and/or winter cheerleading coach, head football coach, head track and field coach, high school, middle school PE and health educator and K-8 counselor. And we do, the K-8 counselor has recently been posted and I believe we do have applications for a stall in teaching.
Brad, do you know when we were made aware of these positions coming open? Is this just now or is this three or four months ago?
It varies. Those are, some of them have been posted for a significant amount of time. A couple of them, the retirements we knew about, and those have been posted for a while. Some of them are more recent. I think the K-8 counselor is a very recent one.
So the ones that have been posted for a while, when did we start receiving applicants for those?
We started not, I actually don't know when the first applications came in.
We're just, and I, and I get it.
A couple of them are, a couple of them are difficult to fill simply because there's not a lot of people in that field. But we've had a couple of them posted for a while, the science, high school science, broad field and one of the middle school have been posted for a while. I know I, we, we posted a couple, one of those in the middle school, we posted a couple of weeks before the four-day week decision was made. And I was somewhat adamant that we needed to wait because I thought it was crazy if we were gonna do some of that after the, you know what, if we were saying that was to increase both retention and recruitment, I wanted to get an opportunity to let it do its work and, and make sure that those were in those announcements, so. We reposted those, having a possible four-day week, to see if we would get more in.
And I guess part of what I think you're getting at is part of what, you know, they've all alluded to too is as we've moved into this negotiations and looking at the proposals that we're offering the teachers and trying to balance that out with the budget. Asking each one of those administrators to really look at the courses that we're offering, you know, more so in, in a high school situation than, than in elementary, but really trying to make sure that we are maximizing the usefulness of the teachers we have before we just say, okay, we have an opening here, now we just have to fill that. Well, do we or can we utilize somebody that's already in the building to help fill that spot and therefore not have such a large impact on the budget? And that's, I think, part of why some of these have sat a little longer before we just go fill them. You know, the high school science one. Do we have other opportunities to fill that position? Or, and some of them we don't. We will just have to flat fill them, but you know, the four-day school week thing, you know, has, has put a twist on everything that, you know, we've been working on. And we're still working on the negotiations and trying to figure out how to maximize the dollars that we have and still provide the maximum amount of services to the students that they need.
And I'm just curious, do we ever lose teachers that apply?
Good question. And we were careful of that and to reach out to teachers and let them know kind of where, where we were at in the process. And know to our knowledge, I mean, I'm sure some you do. You know, there's always that risk. Sometimes we'll interview a teacher and, and they will have three other interviews lined up, you know, it's especially now.
We've also lost teachers in the past to housing. We have some that were assigned on and lost some.
Yeah, they accepted the position and then turned around and didn't take it because it got fired.
But I, I, I believe we have a good pool of some applicants here.
Is that typically just Mrs. Hever, you guys that get the initial screen and then I assume on your
Yes.
hiring process, you bring in other teachers and other folks that, or is it just you guys?
A lot of it depends on the position. We usually try to have at least the four of us there for. We usually try to have at least the four of us there for interviewing teachers, and there's some. Some that we have, some other people involved.
Is it the same for coaches? How is, how is the coach hiring determined?
Coaching usually boils down to the AD and myself conducting interviews. And we usually, it's not like we are burdened with hundreds of coaching applications. Excuse me, there's usually a two-breed position. So we usually interview everybody that's qual, that obviously is qualified to, you know, to put in for that position. But yes, that's how we do that usually.
And that would be open in-house first.
Right.
And then if we don't have an applicant, then they'll reach out.
All positions.
Yes, that's correct.
So you got the high school football coach coming up?
Coming forward. We're screening all the applications tomorrow. Everything is in that folder, and I'll look at all of that.
So I'm just curious, when you say qualified, in your mind, what's qualified to be the head high school football coach?
Well, so obviously, anybody who expresses, I guess that's hard. Usually, we interview anybody who applies, and then through the interview process and our questions, we can, you know, we can look at the qualifications and, you know, what they, what they've already, what their experience is, all of those different things. And then what we're looking out for, you know, the position. When we do, when we hire assistant coaches, a lot of times the head coach is already in place. And obviously, the head coach then has, you know, has input on the candidates and what we're looking at. And, you know, because they know their program and they have their people involved as well, so.
Yeah, it's
It's kind of a
Over the years, especially coaching positions and teaching, too, has changed a lot. It used to be incredibly competitive. You'd have a head coaching vacancy, and there might be 30, 40 applicants for it. And now, you know, it's sad to say, but coaching is one that it is, it's, I guess, the environment has not been kind to a lot of head coaches everywhere across the nation. And it's not nearly as competitive, I guess, as it used to be. And so you'll back, and I remember when I interviewed here years, years, years ago. You know, for a head coaching job, and I mean, I think the board, several board members were there, you know, superintendent, a lot of people, and every school does it differently, but yeah, it's not, it's, it's just changed a lot, the entire candidate pool for a lot of these jobs. And I think coaching much more than probably anything. Oh, I'm still going. I will be, I won't be in great falls, but Mrs. Hedlund will be in great falls for the Board of Public Yet meeting on May 11th and 12th. And then May 30th through June 1st, the administrative team will be attending the Western Regional Joint Threat Assessment training that Montana State. And our red, that's free for us. Our registration was waived as state employees, and our travel will also be covered. There's a safety professional development grant, and that is a little bit, I believe, an extension of some of the training that we had at our last professional development day. A really good program, and we're really excited about it. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple more questions, just.
You may.
So first, Brad, and I'd be asking, excuse me, similar to a public comment tonight, we heard just a request for the survey results. So I'll point that to all of us, I guess. Just, just getting the initial, I don't need the raw data, because clearly, like Jason said, there's, there's things that are redacted. But in terms of a breakdown, I'd like to even see it based on each of your individual groups as far as the teacher survey. So K to five, middle school, high school, that kind of stuff, if we can get that stratified that way.
It would have just been numbers, but yeah, you know, the survey, it just, it would have just said, you know, we have this many teachers in this group.
Yeah, but there's still results that stratify based off morale and that kind of stuff. We should be able to poll, right?
I don't like it was split by, anyway.
I believe it.
Or how many years, maybe even.
Yeah, I can't remember what it was.
Well, I just get in the survey results. We have a lot to work through.
And there might be a data point or two that we can sort out.
And then the other one I had was, and I asked Susie last week, Thursday, is the best way to meet was to you all. So we don't, I mean, I've got a lot of questions, too, but you don't need to drag them through the educational process. But just in terms of trying to get time, but I don't know if it's your administrative team, I assume that's three, four, five of you? That who makes it administrative?
Generally, the principals and superintendent.
So yeah, just, just the time. I don't know if it's monthly meetings, regular meetings.
Yeah, we usually have weekly administrative team meetings on Monday mornings. But I think we're open to meeting.
Well, I'll keep working through this, trying to get a time. I know May is crazy for everybody.
And if you ever have questions or things, feel free to get ahold of me and set up a time.
Okay.
And I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and likewise, or for me, too. I, I've got lots to learn and lots to learn about what, how, how things work here. So just want to make sure I honor your time and respect your time as well. I know, I think you have individual grade meetings and you have different, your, your teachers all meet together as well, right, for staffs?
Yes, yes.
Individual grade groupings, I don't know what to call it.
Elementary, yeah, we have a grade level meeting.
Okay, so yeah, if any time you have, you know, 15 minutes or whatever that would be able for us to participate, or at least myself, I'd be more than happy to come observe and learn and talk, too.
Great.
Awesome.
Anytime.
I'd like to have an executive meeting, just of us, to get up to speed on some things. So what's the process for that?
We can hold what we would call a board work session. It still is a, it has to be a public meeting. But we can schedule a board work session that allows us the opportunity to just, you know, discuss things that wouldn't have any agenda items on it.
I think he's thinking more of executive session.
Yeah, that can't happen.
Why is that?
Everything has to be in a public meeting. There, the only thing that we can go into a closed session is if we are discussing somebody's rights and privacy. Everything else has to be done in an open, public meeting.
Okay, so can we just talk about some of these things that I know Jason and I need to get up to speed on right now?
I guess I'm open for that. I guess, to me, it would make more sense if we had the superintendent here. But I mean, I think a lot of your questions will probably go.
Yeah, it's more clarifications on where we're going and whatnot, and some things that have come out, like with the audit. I want to talk about the audit. What's, what's the way forward with that? What's being done to correct those issues, et cetera, et cetera?
You don't want me answering those.
It's not fair to you guys. I'll answer those questions.
But if they're already specific to, you know, school-level stuff or anything, I certainly try to answer it if you have anything, you know, right now, need, if not, certainly, you know.
What are you, are you doing anything extra this week for teacher appreciation? I mean, clearly, it's
Oh, yeah. There's a luncheon, actually, so to remind everyone, there's a luncheon tomorrow that's being put on by the evening, all of our staff. Oh, yeah, we've done something. Every day we have little things on and having fun. Yeah, definitely. Each day we have something. Student, our, my, our, the high school student council usually does something for the high school teachers, and then we have things that we do on at one of those.
I think to answer your question, Chase, I think the best thing, you know, is just to create a list of those items that you want to discuss, and at the next board meeting, you know, and at the beginning of those discussion items, you know, we just have those items listed out, because that way, when the agenda goes out, you know, the public, too, can see those items that, you know, are going to be discussed and anything that draws their attention that they would, you know, decide that they would like to attend that.
So what is the process of getting on the agenda, not only for us, but also for community members?
You know, the board chair and the superintendent create the agenda. We do that, you know, we have a board meeting every month, second Tuesday of every month. That agenda is put together the week before, usually Tuesday and Wednesday, Susie and I get together and go over the agenda, you know. Some of those items are, you know, kind of annual things that we do at certain times during the year. The other items are the things that have come up in, you know, the last month. And that's why, you know, everything has to be posted in advance, a minimum of 48 hours. And that's why the agenda, you know, with having a meeting every month, you know, we can't put out, you know, we can't put out July's agenda right now. We can't even put out June's agenda, because there's so many things that happen that need to be addressed. And, you know, I know Jason has mentioned a couple of times in the past about, you know, trying to get those agendas out sooner. But as I said earlier, if it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it, because it has to be open to the public and it has to be transparent. So the week before, Susie and I go through the agenda, figure out the items that have come up, figure out those procedural things that need to be taken care of. And then the agenda is posted typically on Thursday afternoon, Friday, at the absolute latest. And then those packets are mailed out. And, and both mailed out, and lately, they've been emailed out to the board so that they have that quicker because of our mail system.
Okay, so if I want something to be on that agenda, I need to get with you a week prior to?
Yes, the sooner the better, but, but no later than the week before.
Is that the same process for community members, too?
Yep, and they can reach out, you know, either to the board chair or the superintendent. You know, the superintendent, you know, does most of the legwork on the agenda. The board chair comes in, looks through it, makes sure that if there has been other items that either a community member has brought or another board member. You know, board members are encouraged to reach out to the board chair, you know, discuss those items that are on your mind, and then we try and get those things on the agenda.
So I would like some clarification on where we're going with the four-day school week. What is the glide path? What's the plan?
Right now, the, it's, the calendar committee is going to meet next week, and they have been circulating and working on smaller calendar committees within their grade level groups, if I understand it right. Okay, the negotiations committee is also working on trying to define, you know, the duty day and taking the ideas that the union representation has brought to the board. We do have to get, you know, somewhat of a consensus on the calendar. You know, are, are teachers, staff willing to start earlier in August, go later in June? Or the other option that's been thrown out is working, say, one Friday a month in order to try not to stretch the year out quite so much. The day, the day inevitably has to get a little longer. And trying to meld all of those pieces together is very challenging and very frustrating, I bet.
I can, I can imagine, and one of the things that I voiced is I feel that we could be setting ourselves up for failure trying to push this too soon, too fast. I'm all on board with moving forward with it, but to try and get it done in probably two months, it's a big lift on our administration. It's a big lift on our, all these committees. It's a big lift on this board. Is there a way to consider, hey, let's do this right. Let's take our time. Let's dot our i's, cross our t's, and do this thing right, and we'll start advertising in October, November. Hey, all these, we want to get these, these highest qualified teachers into our school. Let's start advertising October, November that we're going to, 24, 25 year, we're rolling into it. I mean, has that been a consideration, instead of trying to rush through this and jam up everyone's summers and possibly making some big mistakes that could have second, third order effects on our kids and our teachers and all of us?
Lots of things have been, I guess, considered, you know, and I guess, as you know, you know, the board, the board didn't initiate this.
I'm tracking, yeah.
And so the board, the board is being reactive to what we were asked essentially to do. And so now that, you know, as, as you've signed up for the negotiations committee, that can be a discussion, because that's where that discussion has to begin, is with that group of people.
And is there a date on the calendar, say, hey, if we can't get this all put together by this date, then we got to stay the course of a five-day until we get this record out? Has there been a date set?
There, well, no, because it's just part of the negotiation process. You either come to an agreement or you don't. Or I shouldn't say or you don't. You, you continue negotiating until you reach an agreement.
No, I appreciate that, that insight. It's helpful to me. I'm just concerned. I'm concerned, and, and here's the thing, is the primary drum that I heard from our teachers, who I admire and respect with greatest, is to recruit the best teachers, right? Who are we going to recruit right now, today? Going to afford it, I mean, we're already in mid-May. You see what I'm saying? Our recruiting for next year is actually going to happen starting October, November. It's not, it's not going to make a difference right now in my mind. Food for thought for all of us to think on as we move forward. Unless, Brad, do you have someone right now that says, hey, if you don't go four or five days, I'm not going to apply on those positions?
Not that I'm aware of, not in my, I, I, you know, and I wouldn't know if some of those are interested because of that. You know, so I, I don't know. I have more concern. So one thing that I think gets a little lost in all this is that this initial push for a four-day week came from parents in our community and in our school, and then from the teachers. You know, I think there's kind of been this push that it's, it's come, originated with the teachers that did not. We've had people come to board meetings for a year wanting this, more than a year, multiple years. So when are you guys ever going to look at it? That's where it all originated. And, I mean, that's just, for what it's worth, I guess, because I think a little bit, some of the teachers get a little unfairly criticized. Yes, they did support it, they supported it overwhelmingly at that thing, but that, you know, that was not really the history of where this came from. Second, I think, you know, it's, when we talk about the work the teachers have put in and the, you know, the things like morale and retention and those kind of things, I don't know what the, I don't know what the feeling would be as far as pushing it back at this point. Certainly not possible. I thought that might be the way to go, too, but, yeah, I don't know that we have any teachers that it's been the make or break for us as far as applying. I, I'd be interested to know that most of them aren't going to say, I'm applying, because I think I could work on four days. I'm your guy.
I hope you're not thinking that.
No, I
If that makes, if that makes sense, so I, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know where we're at as far as how well it's worked for recruitment right now. I do know we did see more applications here in the last week than we have previously, you know, whether or not it's related. I don't know. Teaching is a strange thing. The best, strange for a lot of reasons, but as far as getting applicants, if you watch and you, anybody can monitor what's out there on the OPI site, it's all right there where all the schools are advertised. It's usually at its peak right now through June, believe it or not. Most schools are awarding contracts in about April-ish, so not until May. And, and there's kind of an advantage to that, actually, then teachers aren't locked into a contract and can't lock. But it's kind of that waterfall or domino effect of everything coming together. And now schools have done all their internal things, all their numbers are all set, budgets are kind of predicted, and then they come open this time of year. numbers are all set, budgets are kind of predicted, and then they come open this time of year. May and June, there's a whole lot of jobs out there, so I don't know.
Yeah, it, it would be my desire and goal for, for this school to fill a lot of positions in April, because in my mind, I'm thinking we're, those are what you're going to fill with the best applicants. It just, maybe it's the perception of it, but I fear that if we're filling positions in June and July, we're getting the folks that didn't get the job their first, second, third choice, and so that's a concern of mine. And again, going back, and please hear me correctly, I'm not saying revert back. I'm saying, let's just do it right.
Right.
Let's take our time and dot our i's and cross our t's, because I'm, we're just not in the business of, of making mistakes. I mean, again, in light of this audit that came out, in my mind, our house isn't where it needs to be to even be bringing on something so new like this. I mean, if, if we were firing on all cylinders, yeah, let's do it, but it seems to me, when we got issues with our finances and we're trying to get our teachers more money and raises, are we really in a position to take on another big leap like this? I mean, these are the questions that go in my head, rhetorical questions.
You know, I can add to the, to the audit. Those findings and those errors were mostly in reporting errors between us and the county. And not to throw anybody under the bus, but the majority of the issues lied on the county's side of the line.
And that's where the reconciliations? But who's supposed to be receiving those monthly reconciliations from the school side to make sure they're being done? You see what I'm saying? Who's responsible for that?
The district clerk, which we had a transition, two transitions, actually, if you want to look at it, from the last audit. Pam left, we had a, a district clerk come in, and then that district clerk left, and we now have another district clerk.
But who, who oversees the district clerk?
The board.
So it's our job for the numbers. What's the superintendent's position, then?
The board and the superintendent, both, but in, according to policy, the super, the the district clerk, day-to-day operations, obviously, the superintendent has control of the day-to-day operations of the entire district. Correct. Because our, because our, because our job as a board is not to come in and, and, and manage or micromanage the day-to-day things that happen in the school. Our, our job is farther back, you know. We, we hire a superintendent. We hire building administrators to do that. And so our, our job, our role, is to make sure that we pick the best people for that and to provide oversight. And to make sure that the vision of the board is being carried out. But the day-to-day operations of things, that, that's, that's the trust that we've put in the superintendent that we've hired. That's the trust that we've put in the administrators that we've hired. But ultimately, the board is responsible for checking the claims, checking, making sure that the budget, that the district clerk and superintendent work together to complete the budget. But it's the board's job to make sure that the budget is carried out and that all of the checks and the balances come out the way they're supposed to.
I, I struggle with that last part. In my mind, we hire a CEO, our superintendent. The superintendent should be, in my mind, the ultimate QAQC over the clerk checking the budget and the numbers. Our job as, as higher-level board members is to come in and spot-check every once in a while to make sure, one, it's being done, it's being done correctly. But on a monthly basis, it's just like we all balance our checkbooks. We don't wait two or three or four months. That's someone's job, that's someone's responsibility. Yes, you have someone in the trenches doing it, but who's over that person in the trenches doing it?
And that is the superintendent.
That's what I'm asking. That's the superintendent's responsibility. So if we've got, if we've got a trouble with balancing the checkbook, in my mind, before we take on a whole nether challenge, because this is a challenge in a short period of time, we've got to make sure our house is in order. Would you agree? Not to put you on the spot?
No, I, 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 I agree and, you know, I don't disagree.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
And I don't, I don't, you know, I've been fairly clear that I'm somewhat neutral on this, you know. Was the, was the board decision, it was specifically for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four year? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So at that point, I guess, the question would become, to me at least, is can you change that at this point? And do you, you know, and do you need, you know, I guess, I guess my question is, can you? I, I don't even know how that would work, and as Jason said, is it now dependent on the negotiation to change that again? And I don't know those answers, but I think those are questions worth asking, if, if, if that was a direction. Just, I guess, an answer to your question.
The union and the, the board negotiation team could come to that agreement, that, you know, this, this isn't, that isn't possible, that isn't, you know, achievable in the amount of time. And I think they could bring that, as long as both parties agreed to that, then that could be agreed upon.
That's what I'm asking.
But if, but if, but if one side, you know, I'm, I'll just say, you know, if the union wants and says, no, this is what we want, then the board side has to continue to work with them until we reach that agreement. Same thing, if the board said, we want it, and the union's like, well, we don't want it, they're still obligated to work through the negotiation process until we reach an agreement.
Gotcha. And, and Brad, thank you for that question, because I, I was actually going to ask that same question. Is if we get going here another month and negotiations aren't going well, or we just can't come to an agreement, do we have the ability even to revert back and say, we need more time to do this right?
And that's a question I've asked, too, is, is, at, at, at what point, is there a date at which it's not practical to do this? And I look at that as like getting a, I mean, for parents, teachers, everybody involved, you know, when does school start, when are the holidays, that kind of thing, which I think, obviously, we understand how hard it is to get a schedule set. But, you know, if, say, a schedule couldn't be agreed upon by a certain time, at what point is it no longer doable for next year, from a practical standpoint? And I don't know that we have, I don't know that there is a.
I don't know that there is a date, no. It, it would just have to be a mutual agreement of both parties.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Casey.
In, in, like, in the scheme of this, the, the business office would like, the work, like, once the calendar is ratified, the contracts are ratified, that's when our work really begins. So if you're looking at like a hard and fast date on some of these things, like, there's a lot for us once these things happen. And I know that you guys, like, there's this big push and everyone wants to do it right, but there is actually some kind of downriver stuff on that, so don't forget me.
You know, because that, that is the most important position in, in this school district, in my opinion.
You did a chance. We will not forget you.
But I'm afraid of, like, do we just have enough time? And I talk to each other repeatedly throughout the day, do we have enough time?
To, to, do what? To go to the four-day or to?
Just make the changes, I think, is what.
What would be your last? What would?
Probably two days ago.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I hate to like, I don't know how much time we have, but right now, we're in the middle of our health insurance opening moment. That ends on the nineteenth. Our, our health insurance is paid a month in advance, so you have a complete overhaul of the entire payroll deduction system for everyone employed here. So then, then it's another set based on your contract negotiations, so it's almost like a complete redo every time to go through those. Payroll will be a big deal. We're already behind in regards to reporting on our our flex payroll deduction plans. People are asking us for calendars. I don't have a payroll calendar for next year. We've started it. I don't have it. OPI is asking for our calendar, other districts are asking for it. We're just way behind, and those things are kind of stacking up. Every administrative portion of it is kind of on hold, if that makes sense. And some, a lot of our payroll things are paid in advance, if that makes sense. So you've got health insurance, you've got salary negotiations, things like that, calendars, when, when we're paid. It, it sounds small, but it just, they are kind of piling up.
So.
I don't want to miss anything.
Does that, is that impacted by negotiations in general at this point, or by a four-day week? I mean, you, you, I know, but, but I mean, basically, what you need to know, it, it doesn't necessarily matter for whether it's a four-day week or not. It's how much does this person make, how much?
Yes.
How much of their insurance are we, so.
It doesn't, it's based on a day rate, though? Yeah.
But that's.
No, I'm just asking, because I, I don't understand if going to the four-day week would, is, is gonna set you behind, or just the whole negotiation process in general, whether, I mean, because even if we stay at a five-day week, or they still need to negotiate with the teachers and classify, correct?
Yeah.
To, to, for your work? Is that?
Yeah.
Right.
We have a lot of moving parts. It's not just salary employees. We have nine-month employees that are hourly. We have twelve-month employees that are hourly. There's just, there's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what's your, what, what do you think? What's your recommendation? I'm just curious.
I'm not a hundred percent sure I can speak to it with the, there's been a lot of comments that it becomes like a personal issue. I, I struggle with it as a parent, and I struggle with it as an employee. I'm not a hundred percent on board either way. My personal feeling is I don't think that it's great for every, I don't think it's great for elementary. I think high school, I think it'd probably be a huge success. I, as an employee who handles the budget, I don't see it. I, I think we're going to, I think this time next year with the budget, we're gonna see a lot of red lines, and it's gonna be tight. But I also haven't seen anyone come up with a really, a really collectively approved proposal. Like, there's a lot of little bits that everyone likes, so I haven't seen how it would even really work. So I don't know if I can talk to it. Like, answers it, but doesn't.
I, I feel like I'm going into combat with no plan whatsoever. I mean, that's the best way with my experience, and I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I feel like. We, we have so many i's and t's that need to be crossed, and that's what I'm concerned about, is you. I'm concerned about these three over here. I'm concerned about the teachers in the room. The bus contracts, I, I mean, I'm concerned about all this stuff, because we don't have everything i's dotted, t's crossed. And I'm just, I think if we were to take our time and just start working, we can start working it right now, in parallel with normal operations, then we're set up for success. But if we rush into this, I just fear we're gonna fall on our sword, for the record.
Well, that's what we're working. Should've told you that sooner. Next, seventeenth is the next negotiations meeting.
For the.
Five o'clock.
Can I zoom in, because I'm gone that week? Anyway, we'll talk.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other discussion items?
Just a quick question. The calendar committee, is it represented through the whole school?
Yeah, there's like a K two, a three, five, a six, eight, a nine, is it nine, twelve, there's the A B. Classified, yeah, there's scripts across the board, yeah.
Okay.
I was trying to remember the list in my.
You didn't give representation on those sides.
Yep, yes. It's quite a list.
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.